Can you tell us if it goes live on your phone?
I'm on my laptop right now, let me look.
Alrighty.
It should be Falls Church City Schools.
That's the one. Okay, so it should be live. Is it live?
You are live.
Great, thank you. Alright, we are hot, everybody.
Alright.
Jared Litten, it might take a minute to get a quorum tonight.
We're rolling with it tonight.
This is how we work when we have no power. We figure it out. We're pretty good problem solvers.
Hey Greg.
Yes, Sharon.
So I think we are going to need to make a change to the agenda.
I'm happy to move to that if you want me to.
Yeah, do you mind doing that?
Yep, can do.
Great, thanks.
Oh, just, I got to make it.
Have that to one side where you can still see people and then for this, that way.
You guys are hot, just so you know. Party.
Yes.
Your mic's on, just so you know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, so we also need to mute the YouTube stream if you have it running in the background. I don't think it's gonna echo that bad. I think we're okay. Can you, is your, are you on now? Okay, is it echoing too much? Dr. Dimmick, you are missing all the fun tonight. Dr. Dimmick, you are missing all the fun tonight. We've had storms and had to punt. There's no power anywhere in the city.
Really?
It's crazy. So we are, we had to scatter to make it work, so.
Wow, okay. Well, I'm happy to be here, I guess, and I'm happy that everyone is here with power.
That's right. We're on reserve power at the high school at the moment, which is good.
Alright, let's see, do we have a quorum? One, two, three, four. Alright, I think we can go ahead and get started. I believe we have enough people. Alright. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this August 10th Electronic Hybrid School Board Regular Meeting and Work Session. We're gonna ask everybody to have some patience with us tonight. As many of you know, a big storm came through Falls Church, so most places are out of power, so we're kind of piecing this together. So I just wanna check with all the members, can everybody hear us? Everybody good? Alright, with that, we will go ahead. Ms. Gadel, can you call the roll?
Thank you. Dr. Anderson?
Here.
Dr. Dimmick?
Here.
Ms. Downs?
Here.
Mr. Henderson?
Here, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Litten?
Here.
And Mr. Reitinger is not here, and Dr. Wees Bolanas is not here. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Gadel. Now can I have everybody join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Alright, can I have a motion on the agenda? Mr. Anderson?
Jared Litten, I move that the board adopt the agenda as presented with one modification, which is to postpone to a later date, item number 14 on the agenda as presented. So adopt the agenda as presented except for item 14.
Great, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Dimmick. Ms. Gadel, can you call the roll?
Yes, Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Dimmick?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Litten?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gadel. Alright, next we have public comment and requests. And before we begin this item, I need to read a statement. While the Falls Church City's Emergency Ordinance 2011 remains in effect due to COVID-19, written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to school board members. Please send written statements to the school board clerk Marty Gadel at gadelm@fccps.org. Public comments received by 10:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting will be posted on board docs prior to the meeting. Individuals wishing to appear virtually and make public comment must register in advance by emailing school board clerk Marty Gadel at gadelm@fccps.org with their name, address, contact information, and topic no later than 5:00 p.m. on the business day before the meeting. Individuals who indicate they wish to speak will receive an email with an individual speaker with a speaker number and information to access the meeting. Individuals will speak in the order of their speaker number. The board will receive comments for up to 30 minutes or until all registered speakers have been heard, whichever comes first in accordance with school board policy, BDDH. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Ms. Gadel, do you have any comments or speakers tonight?
We have no speakers, but we had one public comment was received by Jared Anderson on an online option for school and COVID testing.
Great, thank you, Ms. Gadel. Alright, next we will move to our closed meeting. Is there a motion to move to closed meeting? Dr. Dimmick, go ahead.
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignment, staff resignation, staff retirements, staff performance, staff change in position, staff termination, dependent care leave, long-term medical leave, childcare leave requests and leave of absence, unpaid leave requests, and advisory committee appointments and resignations, and student matters under Section 2.2-3711A2, in particular, non-resident tuition students and student tuition waiver under Section 9.21/Section 2, interrupted residence, and legal matters under Section 2.2-3711A7, in particular, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body.
Thank you, Dr. Dimmick. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Ms. Gadel, can you call the roll?
Yes, Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Dimmick?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
And Ms. Litten?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, Dr. Noonan?
Yeah.
About how long?
I would anticipate that we're gonna have about a 15-minute closed session. Dr. Anderson and Mr. Henderson, if you'd like to stay where you are and dial into the, or not dial into, but move into the closed session from there, that would be acceptable. And then Ms. Minton, I'll come join you in the conference room, and we'll see everybody on the other link. About 15 minutes.
All right, I think we've got everybody back. All right, welcome back everyone. Can I get a motion to reconvene to open? Dr. Dimick, go ahead.
Chair Litten, I moved that the board reconvened to open meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Goodell, can we call the roll?
Yes, Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
And Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Goodell. Alrighty. Next, we had recognitions and reports, which I don't believe we have any this evening.
We have to certify.
We need this.
You recon, you opened me.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Ms. Goodell, you're right. Can I get a motion to certify the closed meeting? Uh, Dr. Anderson, go ahead.
Chair Litten, whereas the Falls Church City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Henderson. Ms. Goodell.
Yes, Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
And Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Goodell. All right, now we can move on to recognition and report. I don't believe we have anything unless anybody has anything to raise here. Nope. Okay, so next we'll go on to Section 6, which is our consent agenda. Um, do we have any questions or concerns before I ask for a motion to adopt the consent agenda? All right, see none. Can we get a motion on the consent agenda? Uh, Ms., Vice Chair Downs.
Chair Litten, I moved that the board approved the consent, consent, consent agenda presented.
Great, thank you. Ms. Downs, can we get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Goodell.
Yes, Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
And Ms. Fulton.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Goodell. All right, next we will move on to business action and information. Um, first we have 7.01, our reopening. First, we have 7.01, our reopening update, and I will turn it over to Dr. Noonan.
Thank you, everyone. If you'll give me just a second to get this shared appropriately, I will be happy and delighted to present this to you. There we go. Everybody see it okay? All right, great. Well, good evening, Chair Litten and Vice Chair Downs and Board members and those that are watching at home. We appreciate your time tonight as we share with you and the rest of the community what our Falls Church City Public Schools reopening and back-to-school plan is. It's really, it's funny to use the term reopening. It's actually back-to-school. It's not just a reopening. It's all of the same, all of this at the same time. So we are very excited. This, this, just today, we had a really great leadership team retreat. We had forty of the school administrators and leaders here at Meridian High School talking about the reopening, talking about our vision, our values and goals and our work going forward. And tonight, what I hope to share with all of you is some of the information with respect to particularly COVID and COVID response that should hopefully give you all and the community some information. This evening, I'm really bringing to you some recommendations that we'd like to move forward with. I'm not looking for you to necessarily vote on these, but I am looking for some consensus around this and would appreciate any, any feedback that you all have to share with me regarding these reopening strategies. I want to thank in advance the team, Mr. Bates and Ms. Michael, and also Rebecca Sharp for, and she continues to maintain the COVID Empress mantle for a little while longer, but want to thank all of them for their incredible work helping think this through as well. And I do want to share publicly and openly with everyone in the community that as, as I share these tonight, the one thing that we have not done is we've not taken our work here lightly. This is something that we've thought really hard about, deeply about, and at the end of the day, believe are in the, the best interest of our, the health of our students and our community overall as we move forward. So with that, let me, let me start here. A couple of pieces of essential information that I think would be really useful to everyone. And first is that, and it's no surprise, is that the Delta variant has had an impact on our Falls Church City Public Schools learning community in one way or another, whether it's here locally or an extended family or an extended, or our extended community outside of the boundaries of the city of Falls Church. Unfortunately, what we do know about all of this pandemic is that it doesn't see a whole lot of, of boundary, and it does move from place to place, and we're seeing that across the country. The latest information from the CDC and Virginia Health Department on the guidelines will be shared tonight with respect to reopening schools. There are a number of strategies that we plan to put in place to continue to protect our students and our staff when we reopen in 21, 22. And I will preview that much of it is going to look similar to last year, but there are some differences as we, as we reopen. And as we've said all along, and we continue to say today, is that we are planning for a full five-day-a-week return to in-person learning across all five of our schools. So here's what we know about the Delta variant in Falls Church City, Virginia, and in our health district. It has been designated as moderate transmission, which means that there is some community spread. So highly, it is highly contagious. It has the greatest risk to the unvaccinated, and that's where the rub of some of the argument that I'm hearing comes from. And I understand and I recognize that because we have a, and I'll share with you later some of the data specific to our vaccination rates here in the city of Falls Church. We have a lot to be proud of in terms of public health and public safety with respect to unvaccinated, but it isn't, it is really significantly impacting the unvaccinated community. The Northern Virginia region has what they call substantial community spread. So this is not something that we necessarily are immune to, but right now we are in the moderate category. And we just moved into the moderate category two days ago. So I want to make sure that everybody understands that we are moving along the continuum, and hopefully we'll stop here at moderate, but we are seeing some, some growth in cases here in the city of Falls Church. Some really good news to share, and that is that we, during the summer school and during our extended school year, we did have zero cases of any COVID. We had two scares that actually came to us via some false positives of the rapid tests that later were confirmed to be negative by PCR tests, and that will actually play into one of our recommendations later around utilizing surveillance testing. Some other good news is that ninety-six percent of our staff members are vaccinated. I'm really proud of our, our staff. I'm proud of the work that the Fairfax County Health District did when they came in and vaccinated us first on Martin Luther King Day and second on President's Day. And, and that is, that's a good news story. Another really good news story is that eighty percent of the Falls Church population ages twelve to fifteen have had at least one of the doses for COVID, which is an extraordinary number. And ninety-four percent of those age sixteen to seventeen have also had at least one dose in the city of Falls Church. So as a community, we have stepped up and we have continued to do the good work to really push down this, this Delta variant and COVID. And, and I'm really proud of us. The CDC, the Center for Disease Control, has provided some new recommendations for school mitigation practices that we can't, we can't ignore. So we are paying attention to that to, to a great degree. But here's a little bit more information about Falls Church as a locality. And, and for those folks that are interested, you certainly can go to the vdh.virginia.gov site, and there you can pull down all kinds of data and information for the city of Falls Church. And this is as of yesterday, the number of new cases reported within the last seven days is two. And the average over, I'm sorry, new cases is two, but the seven-day average reported as one, our seven-day average number of new daily cases reported per one hundred thousand is four point eight. And then the total number of cases per one hundred thousand population in the last fourteen days is forty point six two. There is no doubt in my mind that those numbers are extraordinary and, and really in a great place. However, we, we want to keep them there, and we, we don't want them to rise. And frankly, I am, I am personally concerned that if we don't take additional measures and steps to mitigation, that we could have an impact that we're not anticipating. We have continually said that we believe in safety first, and so as a consequence of that, we are going to continue with layers of protection for our schools. And I'll remind the board and those folks at home that you've heard sort of that Swiss cheese metaphor. One, one piece of Swiss cheese, a lot gets through, but if you layer Swiss cheese on top of each other, what gets through is almost minimal. So if you think about each of those pieces of cheese being layered on top of each other as one layer of mitigation, the fact is that those holes get smaller and it's less likely to let virus through. And so we really want to approach this from that perspective. So reopening mitigation guidance that, that we're going to continue to follow. And again, because we believe that it's right for our, for our students, for our communities, and for those students that are unable to protect themselves. And, and I also want to say, the goal has been and the goal continues to be, to be open five days a week and full-time. So the more that we can put these mitigation strategies in place, the more likely it is that we're going to be able to stay open five days full-time. So the first strategy that we are recommending is that we require all staff and students to wear masks indoors at all times. That, that guidance comes to us from the ADA, from, excuse me, from a variety of perspectives, but there are some exemptions. And the exemptions for masking here are if there are students with disabilities that have a need to not mask, a medical, a medically necessary need to not mask, and anyone who has developmental exemptions would not need to mask. And we have very few of those students and staff in our buildings. And I know that there is some concern primarily amongst students wearing masks. And I'm not suggesting that we're going to wear masks for the rest of the year. I want to be really thoughtful and, and it's, it's easier to open with another layer of mitigation and to be able to take a layer of mitigation off than it is to add a layer of mitigation later. So, so we are going to recommend that we require all staff and students to wear masks indoors at all time, and note that I say indoors. We are going to require that it be consistent and correct use of masks, and our kids were extraordinary last year and resilient and did a really great job doing that. We will continue to socially distance three feet where possible. And we believe that the way our, our schools are set up, that we'll be able to maintain that six feet pretty, pretty easily in, in most circumstances. And to the extent that we won't need to pod and we won't need to hub at the high school and the middle school like we had last year. We are going to create additional spaces for our students who eat lunch. Well, all of our students eat lunch, but when they eat lunch. And the idea there is to create some additional space because that is one activity in particular that can create more transmission. So we do want to create more space and utilize the outdoors like we had last year, particularly while the weather is really good. We want to continue to promote vaccinations for eligible students and adults. And again, you saw the really great numbers that we have here in the city of Falls Church among our students and our staff that are eligible. And we'd very much like to get that number even higher, but I, I suggest to you that that exceeds the national norm, and we've got, again, a lot to be proud of. We are going to utilize a student and, and staff health screening checklist daily. And this checklist is something that we did last year, and essentially it's, is your student feeling well? Do they have a fever? Are they experiencing any of the symptoms that may be associated with COVID, et cetera? Again, this is going to be done on the honor system. We are a community of people that very much need to come together in order for us to stay open and for us to continue working as a school division really, really well. So I am calling on all of the community to help us do that by engaging in these checklists and screenings of their own children each day and, and of staff each day. And in the event that you aren't feeling well or, or you are experiencing some of those symptoms, we are going to ask you to please stay home and remain home until you're able to get checked. Some other mitigation guidance that we are going to continue to utilize is implementing the frequent hand washing. We continue to have our hand sanitizing stations around the building, buildings. We'll continue to do our deep cleanings in all buildings each night. We would like to limit nonessential visitors and continue to utilize our online meeting structures where appropriate. We know that when there are a lot of people in a very close area, more so than just in a school setting, that it can create some issues. So we do want to continue to utilize online meetings as they seem appropriate. And, and we know that there have been some experiences this year where we've gotten some feedback from parents that they prefer some of the online meetings, and that's been good, and so we want to use those. We'll maintain our COVID response teams at each of the schools that will help us do some of the contact tracing and help us with phone calls and help us do some of the reporting to the health district and the like. We continue to have our public health nurse in our system that will help us support our COVID response, but also help us get back to some of the other things that our nurses have been working on. So training our staff, for example, on utilizing glucagon or utilizing a variety of different emergency medications as necessary. We will continue with our close collaboration with the Fairfax County Health Department. We just started our weekly Friday meetings again. They have been a great consultant with us and have helped us provide and support access to testing. And that is something that also is part of the CDC guidance is how are we accessing testing very quickly and on as, on an as-needed basis, and the health department has been able to engage us in that testing protocol very quickly. We'll continue to monitor, monitor the data, and, and I'm not in a position tonight where I am prepared to say, you know, if this, then this. But I will suggest to you that I don't anticipate that we'll be in masks for the entirety of the year. I, I'm very hopeful that we'll be able to return to some semblance of no masks sooner rather than later, particularly with the numbers of those that are vaccinated, happening, happening sooner rather than later, I hope. And then we are going to require clearances to return from healthcare providers or a negative test, COVID test for students who, and staff who are ill and are sent home. And again, that's just another precaution. And we, again, would work very closely with the Fairfax County Health Department and Health District to help us access those, those tools. There is some new guidance that's recently come out from the CDC with respect to guidelines for quarantine, and I'm going to ask Rebecca to move through this because it's very, it's different than it has been in the past, and I want her to, to explain it because I think she can do a better job than I can. So Rebecca, would you please spend a few minutes describing the latest CDC guidelines for quarantine?
Absolutely, thank you. We have, we do have some updates as we move into the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. I created this slide, and I wanted everybody to see who is required to quarantine. Anyone who is positive is required to isolate for ten days and/or until they are cleared by the health department. That's not a change. Anyone who is unvaccinated, if they are exposed to someone who is COVID-positive, they will have to quarantine. If they're exposed and if they are not masked, that's another piece that they've added for school students. Anyone who is exposed and showing symptoms, regardless of their vaccination status, if you are ill and you have symptoms that, like the ones that Dr. Noonan described, are on our health screening form, you will, if you are showing symptoms, you will pause and you will probably have to quarantine until you provide a negative, receive a negative test result, even if you are vaccinated. Part of that is because of the Delta variant. Anyone placed in quarantine or isolation by a public health official for any reason at all. So sometimes, sometimes people are placed into quarantine because of exposures, because of travel. There are lots of reasons. Because of a symptom that they may have, they get placed into quarantine. So anybody who is placed by a public health official, we honor those placements into quarantine, and we do not allow them to return until they have a clearance. Now, for those who quarantine is not required, if they are exposed, for students, any student who is exposed, if everyone involved in the situation is fully masked, regardless of their time together or distance apart, now that is a piece that we are going to have to update. We had a webinar with the health department, the CDC gave us an update that that is based on the, the three, the three-foot rule. So now, students, if you are within, remember it used to be fifteen minutes for six feet. Now it has changed. If both of, if both children are masked, they are not within three feet of each other, then they, those children who are exposed do not have to quarantine. The, the child who is positive, of course, will have to isolate, but anyone who is, any student who is exposed, if everybody is masked in this situation, then students will not have to quarantine. This is why masking continues to be, to be really important in order for us to maintain instructional continuity, because that's one of the issues when we do have an exposure that, you know, we do have to pause students and that, and sometimes students have to quarantine, and that creates a situation where kids have to be out of school for, you know, potentially up to fourteen days. And so this allows more, more flexibility, and the CDC put this in place, and the health department went over this with us this afternoon. But they did put the caveat of three feet in there, so we will be updating that information. We just got that as of, I believe it was four-thirty today, Kristin, that we got that information with their webinar. The next piece of folks who do not have to quarantine, our vaccinated students or staff will not have to quarantine if they are exposed and they're not showing symptoms. This is a really important piece. And an update that we did also receive this afternoon is if they also And an update that we did also receive this afternoon is if they also have to confirm that they have been vaccinated. So this will be a really, this will be a big change. We used to be able to say, were you vaccinated? Yes, I was vaccinated. Okay, you don't have to pause, you, you know, we don't have to put your name on the list for quarantining, um, that we send to the Health Department. There has been a change. The Health Department is going to require, in order for us to not pause someone, if they're vaccinated, they're going to have to prove to us or to the Health Department that they've been vaccinated in order to not have to pause or quarantine if they've been exposed. I hope that makes sense to everyone. It used to be based on your word. Now you have to show your vaccine card. Okay? And they also do recommend that anyone, even if you're vaccinated, if you've been exposed, they're going to continue to offer testing to anyone who wants it. If they've been exposed regardless of vaccine status. And the Health Department makes all those arrangements and provides no cost diagnostic testing for any of our staff and any of our students. Okay? And then anyone who has had COVID in the last 90 days will not have to quarantine. So those are the, those are the big changes. One of the, the biggest changes, I think, is that for children, if they're exposed and everybody's masked, then the, the students will not have to be paused or quarantined if they are no closer than three feet and everybody's masked. This only applies to students. This does not apply to the adults in the classroom. So. And, uh, we did put a caveat at the bottom there is that this guidance continues to evolve. We got new information today that we didn't have yesterday. And I anticipate that that's going to continue as our public health officials deal with the variants and, you know, looking at the levels of transmission for the different types of variants that we are experiencing in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. I appreciate you, um, sharing that with the board. Um, I, I do want to make sure that everybody understands that this slide is not completely accurate because we just received information at 4:30 this afternoon. Um, and that the note on the bottom is very important because the guidance does evolve. This is not the school system moving the, the goalposts. This is not the school system not knowing what's happening. Instead, we are responding to what the guidance is that we're being given. But the big takeaway for, for us, as we think about making decisions regarding masking, is that at this point, it does appear as though if students are masked, even if they're exposed and three feet apart from others, which I think we're going to be able to accommodate for the most part in our classrooms, um, there will not be any need to quarantine, which is huge for us. Because we do want to, as, as Ms. Sharp said, maintain that continuity of instruction going forward. So, um, something for consideration. Some last considerations, um, for reopening that I wanted to, to also share, uh, with the board is that, um, and I, I mentioned this earlier, we don't anticipate in this full return needing to do any podding or hubbing at the secondary. The reason that we did the podding and the hubbing at the secondary last year was because we were trying very hard to maintain that six feet of social distancing. But because we are now moving to the three feet of social distancing, the classrooms, um, that we have are sufficient for us to meet the needs. Um, we, we expect that all of the activities and athletics will follow the CDC and V H S L guidance, uh, for those. Um, one, one piece that we are looking at too is that there won't be any field trips authorized unless they are associated with V H S L or a school-sponsored, um, activity. So I know that, um, one of our board members raised, well, what about, uh, things that were outside of the V H S L? And of course, um, if it's appropriate, we would, we would transport students for those purposes, um, as well. Um, we do not intend, um, to offer a full-time virtual instruction program for our students here in the city of Falls Church with the exception of, um, our Hi-C program and some virtual Virginia-specific courses for secondary students. And the reason for that at this point in time is that when we, um, did our survey, um, no one, no one, uh, not no one, very, very few people took us up on that option. Um, to the extent that it didn't make sense for us from a, an operational perspective to offer any virtual instruction. Um, if things dramatically change over the course of the next months, then, um, of course we would revisit that. But at this point in time, we don't anticipate offering any virtual instruction, um, but instead returning to a five-day in-person instructional model. Because that is our common goal, uh, between the school system and the community and, and our parents and our students. Lastly, I would say this, and that is as a division, um, we really are committed to, to monitoring and responding as necessary, um, to all of the shifting, um, shifting things that are happening with respect to this Delta variant, um, and, and the data. Um, and I, and I know that some people are going to be upset that we are opening with masks. Um, but again, if, if you can kind of take it up one level and think about how important it is for us to do continuity, to maintain that continuity of instruction, um, it, it's, it's a really important feature for us to be able to say that if you're masked and three feet away, you still don't have to, um, you still don't have to quarantine. So a couple of, um, additional components, uh, that I, that I want to share before we take any questions. Um, the first is you won't see any recommendation in here, um, for, uh, for any kind of surveillance testing. Um, and part of the reason that we, um, are not surveillance testing is that we have had, um, and, and part of it is just anecdotal. Um, but we haven't had a lot of success with any of our surveillance testing or any of our, um, rapid testing here in the city of Falls Church to the extent that, um, about 50% of the cases that we've had have come back as false positives. And as a consequence of that, we, we are really concerned, um, that that will interrupt, um, our, our instructional program. If we do a lot of surveillance testing and end up with a lot of false positives. But instead, what we'd like to do is rely on those mitigation strategies that we've put in place that have allowed us to maintain really low numbers. Um, and I'll, I'll just remind everyone, we had no, no spread in our schools during the height of the time, um, in March, April, May, June of last year, um, because we had really good, uh, mitigation strategies. And now, on top of it all, we have a significant number of students that are vaccinated. Um, so we don't think that at this time surveillance testing is necessary. Doesn't mean that we won't, um, revisit it at some point, but at this point, we don't feel like it's necessary. The other thing that you won't see in, um, the presentation is a recommendation to, um, ask for universal or mandatory vaccinations. Um, there, the numbers of, uh, the percentages of students and staff that are vaccinated are extraordinarily high. Um, we are a public institution, uh, where we have, um, you know, a, a, a lot of families that may not have access. We have a lot of families who may have religious objections. We have a lot of students that may have, um, underlying con- conditions um, that our partners in the private school sector just don't have to, don't have to work with. We take all students in the public schools. And so, um, as a consequence of that, we really believe that because our numbers are so high right now, um, that w- we don't believe that it's appropriate for us to do any kind of mandatory, uh, vaccination status, uh, or, uh, mandatory vaccinations to come to school. We are highly, highly encouraging everyone who is vaccine-eligible to get the vaccine. And we would encourage everyone to get the vaccine, um, but, but we aren't going to mandate it. Um, and then the last thing that you don't see in here is, um, any kind of, uh, mandatory vaccination either for extracurricular activities and the like. And I know that, um, that has some concerns, uh, among some families. And I, I'll share with you right now that, um, we're supposed to play a volleyball team, um, in another community. And the entire volleyball team is in quarantine right now. Um, and, and we're not going to be able to play them if we were supposed to play in the next 10 days. Um, but the good news is, is that they're in quarantine and they're not playing us. And that school division is doing the right thing and making sure that, um, their students are, um, are where they're supposed to be. So, um, we, we believe strongly, um, that we have some really good procedures and processes in place for us to have a successful opening, um, to be able to mitigate this, uh, in our schools. And, uh, to also, um, in the event that there will, and there will be, um, circumstances where students are positive, to be able to move through those quickly and effectively and efficiently as we did last year with our COVID teams, um, to maintain momentum of, momentum of instruction and, um, high-quality education in our schools. Um, but the last thing I'll say before I turn it over to questions, um, from the board is that this really is a community, a community issue. This is not just a school's issue. Um, this is a, this is a community issue. And we, our community has really stepped up and they really stepped in and they've done a great job of getting their students vaccinated that are eligible. They've done a really good job of helping us with masking last year. And we're asking, uh, again, of our community to step up one more time, just like we are, are for them, uh, to help us work together so that we can maintain five days of instruction full-time, uh, now through the rest of the year. So with that, um, Madam Chair, I, I'll turn it back over, over to you, um, for any questions and answers that you all may have, uh, regarding the presentation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Um, thanks to you and Ms. Sharp and really the rest of the team for, for all your work on this. I know we would all love to be done with it and, and not be having this discussion. Um, but I appreciate your work. I know the discussion we were having two weeks ago has changed due to the Delta variant. And I think that's just the reality we're facing. But I, I think what you've brought forward is a well-balanced plan, um, for moving forward. But I know the board members have a number of comments and questions. So I will go ahead and open it up, um, to anybody who has a question. Uh, Dr. Dimick, go ahead.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I am excited that school is going to start in person, five days a week. I fully support this plan. I support masking in schools because of the Delta variant. Um, and I am looking forward to having everyone back in school. Um, I have a few questions. Um, I think the vaccination rates, uh, for our staff and for our students are great. Um, when you, um, when you say that 94% of our, um, staff are vaccinated, does this also include part-time folks? Does it include, you know, everyone who works with children?
It's a great question. Um, it's 94% of our entire, uh, entire faculty and staff. So that includes everyone. We did offer the vaccine last year, um, to everyone, including part-time hourly people, including people from parks and recreation. Um, we, we extended it over to the city side. Uh, we also extended it to some of our contract workers. So it's 94% of the people that have in, interactions with students and, and other adults.
Great. Um, I'm wondering if we can further incentivize this, especially at the elementary grades where our students can't be vaccinated. Um, I, I'm interested in discussing a requirement that teachers and staff either be vaccinated or take weekly PCR tests. Not the rapid tests that will give false positives, but the PCR tests. Um, as you, you know, Falls Church is a small city in a larger Northern Virginia community. Um, and there are some students that, yes, masking is great. Um, but maybe we can do more to ensure that, that we have continuity of education. We don't have, um, teachers out because they're exposed to COVID.
I, I think that's an interesting idea and one, um, that we, so, uh, that we did, we did discuss. Um, and, and we, as we went through, um, the conversation, one of the things that we frankly are, um, concerned about is one, asking vaccination status. Uh, because it is a private decision whether or not you're going to get vaccinated. And two, mandating a vaccination, um, or incentivizing a vaccination when we, we anticipate that some people, the very small number, um, and we're talking about almost single digits, um, because we're at 96%, um, may have some sort of objection, um, or underlying condition. Um, I, what I, what's hard for us now is that, um, and so, so as a consequence of that, we decided to not move in that direction. That being said, um, it's also hard for us to, um, gather the data um, around exactly who has been vaccinated without asking vaccination status. Uh, and we again have some pretty significant concerns about that. And that's because the Health Department will report to us exactly who got the vaccination. They'll just tell us what per- percentage of people got the vaccination. So if, if the board is interested in, in moving forward with asking folks their vaccination status um, and putting, um, and, and then asking them for a mandatory vaccination or a, a PCR test, we certainly can look at it. Um, I think, I think we just have some generalized concerns from an operational perspective too, to be able to do that in an efficient and effective way.
I have a question.
Um, Mr. Henderson, go ahead.
Yes, um, on one of the charts, uh, I think it was the one that dealt with, um, quarantining. Uh, yes, that, that one there. Um, I had a question about the, um, the 90-day, um, if someone had had, uh, COVID, um, then the last 90 days that they don't need to be quarantined. Can you explain that?
Sure.
Why is that?
Yeah, the, the reason for that is that the, uh, assumption from the scientific community is that if you've had COVID within 90 days, you have the antibodies necessary to fight the COVID virus.
Thank you.
Certainly.
All right, uh, Vice Chair Downs.
Chair Litten, can I, can I, oh, I'm sorry.
Sure, sure. Go ahead, Dr. Noonan.
I don't want to, um, I, I don't want to dismiss Dr. Dimick's question. Um, and I'm just wondering if there is any thoughts from other board members specific to asking vaccination status or requiring vaccines. Um, again, tonight's presentation were our recommendations. Um, I, I've shared with you sort of our thinking and our thought process, but we also are part of, part of the team, so.
All right, then maybe we should, yeah, can I open it up to, to that issue right now? If people have any addition, any comments? Uh, Dr. Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Litten. Um, so this is one, this is one of those times that I will do something I don't normally do. I'm a federal employee. I am now subject to President Biden's mandate that, uh, vaccination status to be either, either I'm going to attest that I have been vaccinated or take tests. So attest or take tests is sort of the choice. And I'm not trying to be light about something that actually has a lot of implications, Dr. Noonan, that you, you properly laid out. Um, I would say I am in alignment with, with, uh, Dr. Dimick's thought that, um, there are, you know, some folks, a very small number of folks who legitimately cannot have a vaccine for some medical reason. And I get that sort of an exemption. And I understand the issues and concerns about privacy and asking for, uh, vaccine status. My understanding is that there is nothing in law that prevents an employer from asking for vaccine status. So my understanding is it's not illegal. Is it something that we want to do from a standpoint of trust? Because our, our elementary students in particular cannot be vaccinated yet. I, I sort of feel like, uh, you know, going in a way that would provide additional, um, an additional mitigation level, an additional slice of cheese, if you will, with different holes that don't line up with the other ones, is worth considering. And so I, I find myself in alignment with the idea that, um, we've had a very large uptake, a very high uptake among staff and those students who can have it at this stage, the vaccine, and that's great. Um, and so I would be wanting to at least look at what it would take to actually either have, have a status that is something like, either you attest that you have been vaccinated or you will be taking a weekly PCR test to confirm that you are not carrying the virus. Um, I think it's worth looking into. I know there are ethical issues and I know there are legal issues to take a look at as well.
Thank you for, for sharing that. I will say that you, you are correct. There's nothing illegal, um, about us asking that question. In fact, there's nothing illegal from us mandating, um, everyone must be vaccinated. It, it does boil down to sort of, um, that cultural issue, I think, more than anything, so.
Uh, Ms. Downs, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Dr. Noonan, uh, that presentation. So I'll, I have some other questions, but I'll just stick to the topic at hand right now, which is the, um, I guess mandatory, uh, testing or, or vaccines for our teachers. I do agree with the plan overall, but I do think that, um, you know, the fact that our, our pre-K through, um, fifth or I do agree with the plan overall, but I do think that, you know, the fact that our, our pre-K through fifth or sixth, depending on how old they are, those students are not able to get the vaccine yet, I do feel like there needs to be sort of, that group might need to be treated a little bit differently. And, you know, I'm thinking if there were a teacher at TJ who was not vaccinated and there was an immunocompromised student in, in that teacher's class, and that student can't get vaccinated because they're only 10 years old, you know, I, I think it does concern me. So I would say at the least it might be something good to discuss for the, the elementary. You know, I know there's some, some 12-year-olds are still at TJ somewhere at MEH, but that, but the teachers who teach the, the, you know, younger kids, I think it is worth definitely some more discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Mr. Henderson, I don't know if you, I have a comment on this, but I can let you go ahead if you, if you have one. No worries.
I don't have, I don't have a question.
Okay. I guess I actually really, I guess I see the numbers as being so small. And I think, you know, we have to trust that the people that made the decision not to get it potentially had a pretty significant reason why they did not. So I guess my preference would be to leave it as is, knowing it's a small number. I guess I would go on the assumption that the few people who did not may have a medical or a significant reason not to get it. So, so I would not support some sort of mandate that they have to report and, and if they don't have it, get tested. So my two cents. I know we don't have everybody here tonight, Dr. Noonan, so it may be something we, we also need to talk to the other members who are not here. As kind of as a next step. I'm not really sure, Dr. Noonan, if you have any suggestions or, go ahead, Dr. Anderson, did you have something to add?
Yeah, thanks, Chair Litten. You know, the, the thing that I, I want to make sure that we're careful about is our role as a governance body is not operations, not operational decision-making. So I think it's one thing for us to say, you know, we have some concerns that it probably bears looking at, but I'm not actually suggesting that I think it's something for the board to make a decision or a decision on, because I believe it is an operational decision to be made. So I don't, I guess I would just say, I think I felt like I have said what I need to say, which is that, you know, I have some concerns and I'd like to encourage, you know, some more look at it, but that's not the same as saying that I want to suggest that the board takes some formal action on this in any way.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Are there any other comments from the board on this issue?
I, I would, I would just offer this, and thank you to all of you. I mean, the reason that we brought this to you tonight was because we wanted your feedback. And, and I appreciate the feedback and nothing is, nothing is off the table. We just want to make sure that we get this right more than anything. So I think one thing that I would like to do is, in absence of, of all the board members here, I would like to hear from the others that aren't here. But I would like to at least have the conversation with the two elementary principals and the director at early childhood to see if they have some sense of what their numbers look like in terms of, of need for, for vaccination, because the point, the point actually may be moot. It may be 100% of our elementary folks are vaccinated and, you know, it's really at the middle and high school level where the numbers are, are lower. So let me see if I can collect some information from them without having to necessarily go through asking vaccination status. And if we do need to, to get into the whole conversation about what that would mean in terms of asking for vaccination status, I would like to also have a conversation with some, some teacher leaders in the division, some operational leaders in the division, just to make sure that there isn't anything that we're missing as well, just in terms of development of, of our community.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Noonan. All right. I know there were, there, there were some other questions on other issues. So Vice Chair Downs, go ahead.
Thank you. So thank you again, Dr. Noonan, for that. The, I know when you had mentioned that no one really had an interest in the virtual learning. I'm assuming that was, the surveys were before the Delta variant. So I, and again, looking at more of this elementary group that can't have a vaccine. Do you have, I'm assuming that we have some sort of backup plan in case students who maybe have health issues at the elementary level who can't get the vaccines and now the parents are concerned with this Delta virus, that they have concerns about sending their children to school. Do we, have we sort of have a backup plan for that?
At this point in time, we, we really are, if we needed to have, well, let me, let me say it this way. We, we have a backup plan for everything. The truth of it is, is that the number of, of positive cases in the city of Falls Church is lower than it was when we were in the height of COVID during March and April and May. And in March and April and May, we had not, over 90% of our parents that wanted to send their kids back full-time then. So if the theory, you know, holds and we're able to extrapolate that out, knowing that these numbers are really small, we, we fully anticipate that the number of, of parents that are interested in sending their kids back face-to-face actually is similar to what we had at the, at the end of last year and through the summer when we did the surveys. So, so at this point, the state doesn't require school divisions to offer an online option. And I want to make sure that everybody knows that too. So at this point, we don't have an online option available for our students. If indeed things, as I mentioned, went horribly awry and we ended up being closed due to a governor's order or some other reason, we certainly would have an online option available at that point to continue our learning and our, and our program, programmatic responses. But at this point, we aren't planning to do any online.
Okay, thank you. A couple other comments and questions. You know, I, I do, as you know, I have two at, at the Meridian High School and who are both fully vaccinated. And just to let you know, of course, they were a little bummed about the masks, but they were so excited that there's no pottying or hubbing. That, they thought that was 10 times worse than the masks, because for those who may be listening and don't have older students, the middle school and the high school, you know, in the spring, a lot of students had to sit out in the lobby and do class on the computer, because we couldn't have as many students together and that sort of thing. And, and so both of my boys thought that was the worst. That was worse than masks. So I'm just to put that out there, if they had to choose, they would definitely do, do the masks over the, the pottying and the hubbing. So, and then, let's see, I do have a question. Buses, are we back to normal with buses?
Yep, great question. We are going back to normal on buses. Those bench seats are, are big enough to maintain three feet of social distance.
Okay, great. But, but just to be clear, we're maintaining the same walk zones that were in place last year.
Yes.
But, but back to normal in terms of seating on the bus.
Okay, great. Thank you. And so outdoor events such as, so next in a week or two, we have our home opener for football. So vaccinated individuals standing in the stands don't need to mask. Is that correct?
That is correct. We would, the guidance is if you aren't vaccinated, you would need to wear a mask and maintain social distance. If you are vaccinated, you can unmask outside. We would encourage people to be three feet apart where possible, even unmasked, even if you are vaccinated, excuse me.
Okay. And then my last question is, you had referenced VHSL. Has there been any new guidelines since the spring from them?
No.
Okay. And any, I'm assuming we don't know when they'll come out with anything.
No, we don't.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair Downs. Do we have other? Dr. Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Litten, although I saw Dr. Dimick had her hand up at pretty much exactly the same time. So I guess I have a question, picking up on VHSL, Dr. Noonan. What would be the requirements then for, for masking indoor and outdoor sports? And, you know, if the VHSL guidance hasn't changed?
Since the VHSL guidance hasn't changed, outdoor sports would not be masked. Indoor sports would be, would be optional. We need to make a decision internally for us about specifically volleyball, because that is our only indoor sport in the fall. And we're sort of working through that right now.
Okay. Is, question, I guess for me, in my mind, I'm not aware of, is there something that would limit the ability of the, of the division to make a decision to be more stringent than what VHSL decides? For example, making that decision, as you were just talking about with the volleyball, to go forward if the decision were to, to require a mask. Is there anything that, that prevents us from doing that?
No, there isn't anything that prevents us from doing that, other than potential pushback.
Okay. And I guess the question would be if we were to, if, and there was a big if at the beginning, if that decision were to be made, what does that do for the other teams that would be coming to play?
We, we are not able to, it, it was hard for us last fall to supersede the VHSL guidance even on our home turf. And, and so teams had different expectations of their playing conditions. So we actually did play a number of teams that were masked inside and out. And there were a couple of teams that we played that were not masked. The good news for us is the kids that are playing these VHSL sports, for example, a high percentage of them are vaccinated, which, which is very helpful in the process.
Thank you. Related to masks, again, and then in our buildings, just making sure that how the, how compliance will be checked. And, and we did a really good job with it, is my impression from, from the things that I saw when I was in the buildings last year and from what I have heard from students. But my question is basically, are, what are, how are the expectations communicated clearly? And how are they then, how are people held to those expectations? And, you know, what are the mechanisms now as opposed to what we used last year? What are the mechanisms for people to report concerns that they have, where they, you know, besides just, hey, put your mask up? You know, is there something that, if something more formal needs to happen?
In terms of communication, we've been doing a, a number of things through the summer. You might recall we're doing summer NCO. So there'll be an addition of summer in central office coming out tomorrow, barring, barring the board this evening saying, we, we refuse to, to make our students mask, which I, I don't, I'm not getting the sense of that from the board, that would, that would describe what the expectation is with respect to masking and, and the like, and the rationale for why. Then all of our schools will be providing back-to-school updates as well. And I'll be doing a superintendent's town hall on, in about two weeks as well about, and I'll be publicizing that date and time to talk about what the expectations are. Each school site will maintain their COVID response team, and that COVID response team will have an, will be in touch with staff members. And in the past, each school had a COVID response team email that they could send information to if there were concerns that came up. So that hasn't changed from last year, and those COVID teams are, are still in place as well.
Okay, thanks very much.
I thought you were actually going to go a different direction, and, and I think it's important for our, our community that's listening tonight. I thought you were going to ask, what if a student refuses to wear a mask?
I was going to go there next, but go ahead. You've anticipated.
Yeah, we, we had an internal discussion, and if a student comes to the City Falls Church schools and refuses to wear a mask, they will be excluded from school until such time as they agree to wear a mask.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Chair Litten. I, I may have another couple of questions, but I want to let others get, get a chance.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Dr. Dimick, go ahead.
Thank you. I had, just have a couple more questions in thinking about our students who are either in sports or an extracurricular activity where they will interact with students outside of our immediate community and frequently interact with students, you know, outside of our little region. Can we incentivize vaccination there by requiring students who choose to participate in these activities? So this is voluntary. This is not, you know, this is not going to school. We can't require students who come to school to be vaccinated. But these are students who are choosing to participate in an extracurricular activity where they interact with students outside of the City of Falls Church. Can we require those students to be vaccinated?
I, I don't know the legalities of, of requiring vaccinations for students.
Well, we require, we require some vaccinations, so how is?
This one's different because it's not FDA certified. I think once, once it gets its FDA approval, I think we could then, at that point, consider requiring it. But I, I think it's, it's different from that perspective. At least that's the advice that I've been given.
Okay. And then I have a question about substitute teachers. I guess first, are they vaccinated? And second, how does our substitute pool look if, you know, we're back to, you know, if you have symptoms, the teacher may need to stay home for a day before they hear back from their doctor that they can go to school?
I actually am going to ask Kristen, who's just fresh back from Poland. I'm sorry about that, Kristen. But I'll, I'll start the answer and then let you chime in. My understanding is that we have had a very, well, not my understanding, we've had a very steady and consistent substitute pool for the last several years. We have sort of people that have worked with us and for us for a long time in that substitute pool. When we did the vaccination clinic, we also vaccinated a significant number of our substitutes just for that reason, so that we would have substitutes that would be available to come off the bench, if you will, and, and come in, in those circumstances. Last year, in, in the event that we didn't have a substitute, we did pull on some of our paraprofessionals to help us out. And we pulled on each other to help each other out in those, in those rare circumstances. But Ms. Michael, do you want to add anything to that?
Yes, thank you very much. We were very fortunate last year in that the substitute pool that we had was very willing to take us up on the offer of getting a vaccine and to continue to sub for us. This year, when we look at substitutes, we've already started the hiring process for additional subs. I have to give a huge shout out, sorry for the additional noise here in the high school, but I have to give a huge shout out to our assistant principals at all of our schools. They have been leading that substitute hiring process and they do just a tremendous job. So we will continue to promote that our substitutes get vaccines as well, and there's great vaccine availability.
So Ms. Michael, is it, is it, is it possible or would it be possible to add a line on our application process? Is it advisable perhaps to add an application line on the substitute application that asks the question, are you vaccinated? I mean, that's something that we could explore, I, I think. And I, I just put that out there for us to kind of talk about internally, Dr. Dimick, because I, I take your point that, you know, as people are experiencing symptoms, we are going to have to sub out some people. And it would be nice to have a, a fully vaccinated pool of folks that could come in. I will say that we do have a significant number of vaccinated substitutes, and we were able to manage last year very, very well with that team. And most of those folks are coming back.
So I was pausing for a minute because one of the great things about our new high school is all the community use. And a team of people was just leaving and it was incredibly loud here, so I apologize for that. I think as we look at substitutes, one of the things is we can work with the assistant principals to ensure that they're asking these questions during the interview process. I don't think we would want someone to not apply if they're not yet vaccinated, but I do think we want to encourage them. And through the relationships that we build through that substitute interview and hiring process, I think we can really leverage on those relationships to promote ensuring that we have the people vaccinated prior to them starting.
We can also utilize the relationship we have with the health department to streamline that process for someone who needs a vaccination as well.
Great, thank you. Was that all, Dr. Dimick? Did you have any other questions?
That's all, thank you.
Great, thanks. All right, are there other questions and comments? Dr. Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Litten. Dr. Noonan, I just, I really just, on this particular agenda, I really now have only one other question, which is, we haven't talked about one. um, we haven't talked about lunch other than n- new spaces being created. And I have had a couple of parents reach out with some questions about that. So um, do we have any sense of how lunch is gonna look at the elementary level versus at the at the secondary level?
After speaking with our um, elementary principals this past week, um, lunch will look very similar to the the way it did last year in that we're gonna continue to utilize outdoor space, um, utilize other spaces that are available and the like. Um, so so we'll have some nice separation uh, among our students, particularly on nice days. Uh, at the middle and at the high school, um, there there's more space than we need here um, in terms of uh, being able to spread out. So in speaking with uh, Ms. Hardy and speaking with Mr. Serensis and Mr. Carey, um, they do plan to um, add additional seating, for example, on the stage at Henderson. Um, and then utilizing some of the other um, spaces here at the at Meridian for for eating. So we are going to um, not have exactly the same thing that we had last year. So you might remember when, if you came in during lunch and walked down the stairs in front of the gym, there was a whole cafe set up. Um, that will not be necessarily in place as it was before, cause we're moving away from um, the the full six feet. But we are gonna try to provide provide additional space during during the eating time.
And may I add some additional information about lunch, if that's okay? Um, we will continue to have free lunch, a full lunch meal available to any student this next year who wants it. Um, in addition to that, we are gonna serve à la carte. So during this first year that just ended, um, we were doing bag lunches and we're going to return to the hot cooked food um, that Richard Kane and his amazing food service team is known for. Um, so I do think we're going to see much improved lunch options for students and the return of à la carte, all the while supporting that social distancing.
And we'll monitor those those lines to make sure kids are spaced out.
Great. I think kids will be very happy to hear the return to food. I I I've had comments from neighbors about lunch options, so great.
They didn't like the ham and cheese option every day? I I understand.
All right, th- thank you, Dr. Noonan, and and thank you to your whole team. Uh, I don't have any more questions, um, but I will say, yes, I am entirely comfortable with um, with the the recommendations that you've made about masking and going forward with that. And entirely comfortable endorsing this, and I'm excited to see us being ready to welcome our our students back and our staff back and uh, five days for for everybody K twelve is is fantastic. So thank you to you and the team who's put in so many hours of the summer in the past year.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Great, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Are there any other questions? Comments? All right, all right, well, not seen any again, thank you to Dr. Noonan, Ms. Sharp and the team. Um, we really appreciate your work on this and I think it's a a balanced plan for going forward and I'm hopeful our community will be very supportive of this plan. Um, so thanks again for your work on this. All right, we will move on to the next section under our business action and information. Um, our next three items have to do with policy. I'm sure we will be calling on Ms. Minson, let's see, seven point oh two is waiver of first reading and approval of second reading and adoption of policy E G A A. And I will turn it over to Ms. Minson.
Very good, good evening, this, we only have one policy for waiver of first reading this evening, it is policy E G A A. This policy had previously been adopted by the board in March of twenty nineteen. And there's only one proposed change by the V S B A, which is to change the reference to his or her to the staff members, which is there in the final paragraph of this policy. Any questions about policy E G A A reproduction of copyrighted materials? Seeing all right, that's the only policy for waiver of first reading this evening.
All right, then uh, can I get a motion on this item? Uh, Dr. Dimick, go ahead.
Chair, I move that the school board approve waiver of first reading and approval of second reading and adoption of policy E G A A reproduction of copyrighted materials as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Uh, Ms. Skedell, can you call the roll?
Yes, uh, Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Dimick?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
And Ms. Litten?
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion passes.
Great, thank you, Ms. Skedell. All right, we will move on to second reading and adoption of policies, Ms. Minson.
Thank you, we have five policies for second reading this evening, these are some of the meatier ones that came before the board last month. The first of those policies is policy G C L. Uh, right now it's titled professional staff development, there was a request whether we could change this so that each of the line bullets, instead of referencing licensed professional staff, broke down what is required for licensed professional staff and then what is required for all instructional staff. Um, we did make those changes, they're reflected in the policy that's on board docs, it would change the title of the policy and um, change a number of the lines within the policy. I did wanna point out that while this is certainly something that the we can change if that's what the board wants. To the extent we try to hew to the V S B A model policies, this does lead to some changes down the line. Um, for example, all of the references to um, staff development in the current policies that have been adopted are to policy G C L professional staff development. So taking this from a just a professional staff development policy to an all staff development policy is just something we need to kind of reflect in future iterations of policies. Um, but it did seem to be the will of the board to see what the policy would look like if we added that. So those changes are reflected um, through red line um, changes and through the strike through feature um, within this policy. And are there questions on G C L, were we able to accomplish what was requested by um, breaking down what's required of licensed professional staff and then all instructional personnel and all staff?
Uh, Dr. Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you, Cheryl Litten, and Ms. Minson, yes, this, I I think this um, definitely clarifies things in a way that certainly matches my recollection of the board discussion last last time and does make it a lot clearer. Um, so I'm, I like the way this now now separates things out, just sort of makes the reading of it clear. Um, the, there is a an extraneous four at the beginning of the uh, fourth bullet, for administrative personnel, that's it. But I do think on the substantive side, this really, these changes, I think, make it a lot clearer and 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 really helps um, make the policy work for me anyway.
Great.
Great, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Are there other questions or comments on this policy? All right.
Seeing none, I'll move on to the next one. Um, I will note that in the adoption of that policy, we would wanna say as amended, I do think we should remove that word for um, at the beginning of line twenty-three, so thank you for that, Dr. Anderson. The next policy for second reading is policy I G A I, character education. Um, there was one change that's reflected at both lines twenty-four and thirty-two as recommended um, by Dr. Ruiz Bolanos. Um, but there were no other changes to this policy from first reading, this policy would replace our current policy six point three by the same name, character education. Any questions about I G A I? All right, I'll move right along, the next policy is policy I J, school counseling program. This would replace our current policy six point three four. There were um, fairly extensive changes recommended at first reading based on what the V S B A had had in place, calling it guidance and counseling versus school counseling. But there were no proposed changes um, other than the those recommended ones at first reading. So you'll you'll note that the policy as it's reflected on board docs has no um, red font and no proposed changes other than the um, new adoption date. Any questions about policy I J, school counseling program? All right, the next policy for this evening is policy J F C, student conduct. This is the policy that would replace our current policy nine point three four. Um, and I do appreciate there were a number of questions that came up last time about this and a few emails that came forth. But there were no proposed changes from um, first reading other than at line two oh three, making clear that theft included um, theft of anything from a bicycle or of a bicycle. And then also adding at line uh, two fifty-three that obscene language or language, including language that violates the non-discrimination policy um, would qualify as profane or obscene language. Any questions about policy J F C or proposed changes based on? What was presented at first reading? Yes, Dr. Anderson?
Thanks, Ms. Minson, um, I had a simple question on line twenty-three, which is um, should that bullet on line twenty-three say in school vehicles other than in school board vehicles? Partially is because of the way I think it reads oddly to have it at school board vehicles, but also because that would then comport better with text further down in the draft policy?
I I think it would make sense to change that so that there's no um, doubt that we're not talking about the vehicles of school board members, for example. Um, so making the S in school lowercase and removing the word board so that line twenty-three just reads in school vehicles, I think that would be a fine change if the rest of the board is amenable to it.
Would, can I ask a question? Would it, would it be okay if if we said school vehicles and then parentheses owned by school board? I think the point there is that you all own those vehicles.
Yeah, I I see that, Dr. Noonan, I think um, I actually, it's just, there were two parts to it. One is I did think of the case that Ms. Minson brought up of personal vehicles of school board members, but mostly it was that further down in the policy, it talks about school vehicles and not school board vehicles.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
I I do have a more substantive comment too, but I don't know, Cheryl Litten, if you wanna stop on on this one or go ahead and have me ask that question?
I'm just unsure is, so is the one we were just talking about clarified or do we need to clarify? If it's, we're adding school board or not? Ms. Minson, are you, are you clear on what it needs to say or no? Do you need further?
It would be helpful to hear from members of the boards via nodding or shaking heads no. Would you all be okay with the change of line twenty-three in lowercase s, school vehicles, parentheses, I E, vehicles owned by the school board?
I'm fine with that.
That sounds fine. Everybody okay with that? I'm not seeing any no's, okay. Does that work, Ms. Minson?
That's very helpful, thank you.
Okay.
So the more substantive question I have is actually substantive is not in the length of the change, cause it's again just a short change, but in its meaning. So down on line, I have to look at my notes here, two seventy-one. Where we're discussing the weapons violation policy. Um, we incorporate by reference policy J F C D, which provides for a variety of disciplinary measures if the if that policy is violated. Um, and so the change that I wanted to suggest is on line seventy-one, changing the phrase students will face expulsion to students may face expulsion. Because in policy J F C D, it's a, it it lays out a range of possible disciplinary actions and a and it it isn't always either expulsion or suspension. And so to be more correct with the the incorporation by reference, I think it makes sense to say may rather than will. I don't know if that was clear to anybody other than me, so sorry if I uh, if I rambled at eight or at nine o'clock at night on a Tuesday.
Could you say the line number again?
Line number two seventy-one.
Okay, so Ms. Minson, one of the questions I have is um, it's sort of relative to that. Isn't, isn't expulsion required in a weapons violation?
It is, but under policy J F C D, um, it, the language is may.
Well, I wonder if, I I guess the the reason that I'm sort of asking that question and just wanna confirm is that just because of uh, will require expulsion doesn't necessarily mean that a student is expelled. It could mid, you can, you can always change the disposition. But by code, if it's a weapons violation and it's required, it it probably should chase, say shall in both places. So I I guess that's the question for me.
So if you look at both, Dr. Noonan, if I I dug into that too, and if you look at J F C D and you look at the underlying Virginia code, it's actually a firearms violation that requires expulsion, other kinds of weapon violations don't. And so that's why it's sort of, at least that's my interpretation of it.
I think by changing will to may at line two seventy, it allows that a student might face expulsion for a weapon in school, might face suspension for a weapon in school, but it's not mandatory, whereas you're right, Dr. Noonan, also in J F C D, there is a mandatory expulsion for possession of firearms, but weapons could be something other than firearm. So I I I think I know why the V S B A included the language will face expulsion or suspension. But I think by saying may and pointing towards that weapons in school policy, it could cover the possession of firearms when expulsion is required.
As as long as we don't, um, as as long as they don't run afoul to each other, I think is the big the big concern that I have so that we're not in violation of Virginia code.
I think changing it from will to may would not put us in violation.
Thanks.
So if that's the case, I guess, Ms. Minson and and the rest of the members can say I would be more comfortable if it said may, just because I think it actually does fit what's in J F C D more correctly. And that sentence is referring to what's in J F C D. But that's just, just my comment.
And do we need a sense of the board if they're okay, if we're okay with what Mr. Anderson is suggesting?
That would be helpful, yes.
Okay, so I'm seeing yeses on Mr. Anderson's suggestion, okay. Are there any, is anybody opposed to the change Mr. Anderson is suggesting? All right, seeing none, I think you can go ahead with Mr. Anderson's suggestion.
That's helpful, thank you. Any other questions or comments on policy J F C, student conduct? All right, then the final policy for this evening is policy J O A, student transcripts. This is a policy for which we did not have a existing policy and we did after first reading have a question about section A, starting at line thirty-one. Um, we had added to this policy to make it specific to Falls Church that we would have a corresponding regulation um, that that could be followed in order to make clear when students could receive credit for outside courses or be reimbursed. And following um, the request of the school board, we made this more mandatory language that the expectation should be um, that that policy is, the regulation J O A R is followed. Um, if that regulation is not followed, then F C C P S will not accept the course or credit and will not reimburse the student or the parent guardian. So that's at lines um, thirty-six to thirty-seven is reflected kind of in the red line and the strike through. Any questions about policy J O A, student transcripts? Dr. Anderson, you did have one question at line thirty-one, did you want to raise that?
No, I think I I I was thinking about it, but I think it's fine. I'm satisfied with it, so thank you.
Sure. All right, so it appears there are no questions on J O A, so those are the five policies for second reading this evening.
Great, thank you, Ms. Minson. All right, if there's no further question on those, can we get a motion on second reading and adoption of policies? Uh, Dr. Anderson, go ahead.
Cheryl Litten, I move that the school board approved second reading and adoption of policies, G C L staff development, I G A I, character education, I J, school counselor and counseling program, J F C, student conduct, and J O A, student transcripts, um, as modified following the discussion.
Great, thank you, Dr. Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick, uh, Ms. Skedell.
Uh, yes, Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Dimick?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
And Ms. Litten?
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion passes.
Great, thank you, Ms. Skedell, all right. Great, thank you, Ms. Kedell. All right, and our final item on policies is first reading of policy JFCL. And go ahead, Ms. Minton.
Thank you. We have one policy for first reading. This is a new policy. It wouldn't replace an existing policy, but it is consistent with our current practices, which is giving notification regarding prosecution of juveniles as adults. We do include that in our parent and student information handbook every year. But I do think it makes sense to move forward on this policy as it's something we're doing. It's something that's required by the Virginia code, and it's a fairly straightforward policy from the VSB A. Any questions about policy JFCL?
Go ahead, Dr. Anderson.
Because of course, why not? My question is simply a modification to the word order in this for clarity because I would like to suggest that it should be ordered. The Falls Church City School Board annually provides two students information developed by the Office of the Attorney General regarding laws governing the prosecution of juveniles, et cetera. So it would be taking this, the two words, two students out of line five and inserting it between provides and information on line four. Because the Attorney General's Office develops the information and we just provide it to the students. And the way it's written now, it doesn't say that. And I don't know why people do word order like this, but anyway.
For what it's worth, I like that change. I think it is more clear. The the short answer is as to why is it done that way is that was the exact language taken from the Virginia code section, but there's always room for improvement. So if everyone else agrees that they like it as well, I think that would be a fairly easy perfunctory change and doesn't impact anything that we're currently doing other than maybe making it a bit more clear.
All right, is everybody okay with that? Yes.
I am.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I'm against this policy to begin with because I'm totally against the idea of prosecuting juveniles as adults. So I'll be voting no on this policy.
All right. Um. So Ms. Minton, I think that's a yes on Mr. Anderson's change.
Okay.
What was his change? What was the change? Great.
So, Mr. Henderson, I would just suggest moving the words two students out of line five and inserting it between annually and provides. So the writing would be now the the board annually provides two students information developed by the Office of the Attorney General, et cetera.
That that doesn't really change the basis of my objection.
All right. Any further comments by anybody on this policy or questions? All right, can I get a motion on first reading of policy JFCL? Dr. Dimick?
Cheryl Litten, I move that the school board approved first reading of policy JFCL notification regarding prosecution of juveniles as adults.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair Downs. Ms. Kedell?
Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Dimick?
Yes.
Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
No.
And Ms. Litten?
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion passes.
Great, thank you, Ms. Kedell, and thank you to Ms. Minton for her continued work moving us through many policies. We appreciate it. All right, we will move on to section eight, future agenda topics. I believe there was one issue we discussed earlier this evening. Go ahead, Dr. Anderson.
Um, thank you, Cheryl Litten. There's actually one topic that that we've discussed earlier, but another topic that I just kind of wanted to follow up on, which is would also be a future agenda item. So the topic discussed earlier is it's inspired by going through the policies. And one of the policies that we have regards are school board advisory committees and numbers of members of committees versus other other aspects. I think it would be wise for us to take a look at the at that policy again and determine if there are any changes that the board might want to make in terms of specificity of membership numbers or processes for appointments or anything like that. Just something for us to look at at a future a future meeting.
Great, thank you, Dr. Anderson. We will work that into an agenda in the near future.
Okay, and then if I may ask one more?
Sure, go ahead.
The other one is earlier this summer, Dr. Noonan, you gave us a preliminary update on results from metrics and measures of student progress over the over the past year. And I'm just wondering, is there an intention then to have an update here now that we should be getting close to having all the finalized clean data out of the state, et cetera?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Anderson. We intend to bring that information to you in the fall as we have in the past. So you can you can look forward to that. We also this evening at the meet and greet, many of you got a chance to meet Dr. Peter Weylandman, who we're very excited to have on, who was our new Director of Research Accountability and Assessment. And he is he he'll be helping us pretty big with that report. So he needs to get his feet on the ground as well, but we'll be bringing it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Mr. Henderson?
Yeah, I have a suggestion for future agenda items regarding the policy of naming facilities and the restriction within that policy that the person that might be named that might maybe might name a facility after has to be deceased for at least 10 years. It seems that we've broken that policy at least one time in the case of Jesse Thackeray. Fairfax County, our neighbor, named the school for John Lewis. And the US Navy also named a ship for John Lewis. And this was within a year after his death. So I think the policy is antiquated and superfluous, and it should be rescinded.
Great, thank you, Mr. Henderson. Dr. Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you, Cheryl Litten. Mr. Henderson, I'm in agreement with you that we could always take a look at policies and make sure that are right. I the one thing I would just like to comment on is I don't believe the restriction of not naming a facility for someone until they had been deceased for at least 10 years was in place at the time of the naming of Jesse Thackeray. I believe that was a policy change that that postdates the naming of Jesse Thackeray. So it wasn't that the policy was was waived in somewhere or something. It just didn't exist at the time.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean it's not worth looking at going forward, though.
Oh, well, I'm against that restriction in the discussion. I mean, not that I want to change. We've already gone through the name changes. I'm not trying to bring up that debate again. However, I just feel that it is a restriction that no one else follows. And that I remember we talked about during the debate of the possibility of naming the school for Ruth Bader Ginsburg. And someone invoked the restriction at that time. And I think that it it shot down a great opportunity for a great possible name for the for the school. And I think that's unfortunate. I think that was unfortunate.
All right, thank you, Mr. Henderson. We'll we'll talk to the board members and consider whether that's something they we want to raise as a board.
Okay.
And reconsider that policy. All right, any other future agenda topics from anyone? All right, seeing none, we will move on to 9.01 Superintendent's Report. Dr. Noonan?
Thank you, everyone. I know that the evening's getting late and we've got a work session still after this. So I'll I'll move through these relatively quickly. The first is, as I mentioned before, we had a really great leadership retreat today with 41 leaders from across the division as we worked around our our big ideas of roots, resilience, and and renewal and spent a lot of time with that. We're excited about the year coming up and and ready to roll. Pop-up registrations are going to be happening. So our students services, our ESAL department and IT teams are working together host two pop-up registration events in the community, Saturday, August 21st from four, nine to four at the Pavilion at Berman Park. And then again, on Sunday, August 22nd, from nine to four at a site to be determined. This is something that we instituted just a couple of years ago to try to bring registration to where our students are and continue to work to to get kids out to school. So this will be followed up by an open house at our Family Resource Center on Monday, August 23rd. Tomorrow is a big day for us. It's new professional orientation. And tomorrow we have 35 new teachers and professionals who'll be arriving at Meridian High School at eight o'clock in the morning for their very first day in the City of Falls Church schools, and we're excited to welcome them. So many thanks to William Bates and the CIA team who've been working to make this a meaningful welcome to FCCPS. Along with Mr. Bates, Julie McCrina, Sally Lehrer-Frisch, and our administrative intern Jamie Osborne have done a tremendous amount of work making sure that we are ready tomorrow for our students or for students for our new staff members. Terms of return to school, we're looking forward to the return of our 10-month employees starting August 16th with two flex days, followed by eight days of professional development and classroom setup time. These are mostly our teachers. Para-professionals will return on August 25th. And professional development sessions are going to be held all day, August 24th at Meridian. And then the last piece, and this was in your update, but I'll remind all of you again, uh-oh, the lights just went off here. There we go.
Actually, they're coming on. We just got power in the refrigerators.
Oh, that's a good sign.
Okay. Hey. All right, we have power. I guess that's more important than my superintendent's report at the moment. A weather call for tomorrow at 5:30, so maybe we don't have to have it now, Kristen. Anyway, convocation, which is our big annual kickoff with everybody, is happening on Wednesday, August 25th, and I hope that all of you will join us. Chair Litten, we're hoping that you can come and say a few words of welcome to the staff on that morning. Breakfast starts at eight o'clock in the cafe, and will be provided by our food service team. And the program itself will begin at nine o'clock. And our theme, as I've mentioned before, is roots, resilience, and renewal. And we're looking forward to an extraordinarily great year. So I hope all of you can make it. There's a lot going on right now. We are T minus 20 days to our students arriving for the 2122 school year. And this is the period of time where it's a it's it's like a marathon. And we're in the, you know, the central office is in about the 15th mile here. So we're going to hit the hit the wall in about 17 days, 17 days, but we're going to make it through. So anyway, thanks to all of you for your continued support as we as we move forward. I'll turn it over to you, Chair Litten.
Great, thank you, Dr. Noonan. Thank you for the report. All right, for 10.01, we will move on to
Can I ask a quick question? Hi, thanks. Thanks, Dr. Noonan. Quick question. I don't mean I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but any sense of how registration's looking at this point?
I don't have that information. We'll try to pull some information and put it in the Friday update for you.
Great, thank you.
Just did the Power School rollover, so we'll be able to do that this week.
Yeah, so Power School is our is our student student platform, and we literally just did the rollover today.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Downs. All right, anything else for Dr. Noonan before we go on to board comments? Okay, not seen any. We'll go into board and student liaison comments. Let's see, I will just look on my screen. Arianna, I know school has been out for you, so you probably don't have anything, but I will go ahead. Is there anything you'd like to mention?
Um, oh. Sorry.
Oh, getting a little echo. All right, no worries. We can.
Okay, there we go.
Good, okay.
Sorry about that, but um, I don't really have anything to say. People are enjoying the break, but thank you, Dr. Noonan, for your presentation tonight about reopening. And I think a lot of us will be very excited to hear we'll have an actual more normal back to school this year without any prodding. We can actually go into the building on, you know, in at the end of August. So even who have masks, I think this is probably the best situation we could ask for. So thank you all for your work.
Great, thank you, Arianna. All right, next, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Chair Litten. Real briefly, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Board meeting this morning, and the main thing is sort of a repeat of what I said last time when we met our our meeting. They are looking for four new board members. And so if there are members of the of the chamber that would want to go on the board and folks know about it, I would encourage folks to do that. And again, to remind everyone that our small businesses are our partners in in our town, and they definitely can use our support. And so if you have a choice where to shop and a choice of where to get the other things you need, if it works for you, please go to one of our one of our local businesses. So otherwise, no comments.
Great, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Vice Chair Downs?
Thank you, Chair Litten. Just, I guess, giving a shout out to our partners at the Rexham Parks Department. I know we're going to talk about the calendar in a little bit, but for those who obviously have noticed that our school calendar for this coming year has a few more holidays. And our partners at Rexham Park have really, if you look at the course catalog for this fall, almost for every single holiday and every single teacher workday, they have a camp available. So we just really want to thank them for supporting our working parents who need childcare during those additional holidays. And they're also, again, offering early release childcare. And so again, as they did in the spring, and that's just a real lifesaver for so many of our parents. So thank you again to Rackham Parks. They've been fantastic partners, especially during COVID with supporting virtual learning as well. And in terms of the Falls Church Education Foundation, a couple of big events they have this fall, they've got run for the schools on September 12th, which is a run throughout the city. And so registrations are open now for that. They're working with the Athletic Boosters, a whole whole day golf tournament called the Little City Golf Scramble. That's on September 29th. And then they'll be hosting the Home and Garden Tour, which usually happens in the spring. They've moved it to this fall. It will be on October 17th. And all of these events raise money for the Falls Church Education Foundation. For those listening who may not be familiar with their work, they are really are I don't even know how to say, are our partners in terms of financing things that our budget doesn't always cover. They they have teacher grants. They support many, many, many of our ESAL students and programs to support ESAL students, even facilities of things at the new high school that sometimes budgets don't cover. So they really are just a lifeline for us in terms of finances. And so these all of these events are fundraisers. I encourage everyone to participate. And also, every year, you can join as an academic booster and make us an annual donation. And again, that goes towards supporting our teachers and students. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Vice Chair Downs. Mr. Henderson?
Yes, I just wanted to take this opportunity to give notice, make people aware of the Tannahill Heritage Foundation's Tannahill Music Festival is coming up on not this Saturday, but the next Saturday. Saturday, August 21st. Last year, because of COVID restrictions, it was canceled. But this year, we're hoping that people will come out and enjoy a day of music and learning a little bit more about the mission of Tannahill Heritage Foundation here in the City of Falls Church and the history of African American. of African-Americans and their contributions to this community. As you know, Mary Ellen Henderson was one of the people who was instrumental in starting the first rural branch of the NAACP. And a lot of people really probably are not aware of that history, that the first rural branch of the NAACP was established here in our community. And so come on out, have some fun, learn, and enjoy yourself. Not this Saturday, but next Saturday, August twenty-first. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Henderson. Dr. Dimick.
I don't have anything to report at this time.
Great, thank you. I just want to say a big thank you to everybody for tonight being flexible, so we were able to move ahead with this meeting. So thanks to all of you and for the board members. I'll be in touch about rescheduling our executive closed meeting. We'll try and do that maybe sometime this week. All right, next, we will move on to approval of the minutes. I get a motion to approve the minutes? Dr. Anderson.
Chair Litten, I moved that the school board approved the minutes of December eighth, twenty-twenty, December fifteenth, twenty-twenty, June eighth, twenty-twenty-one, June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, and July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, as presented.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Ms. Goodell.
Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
And Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Goodell, and thank you for all of those minutes. All right, next, we will move on to our work session. Oh, sorry, Mr. Dr. Anderson, did you have something you needed today?
So I just wanted to take a chance to, to thank Ms. Goodell, because I believe with that set of minutes, we are, we are completely caught up to present date, except for tonight. So it's been a lot of work.
We may have some, a few more. In all honesty.
All right, great, thank you. So I believe I'm turning it over to Dr. Noonan on the homework study item.
Yes, thank you so much. And I'm not going to spend too much time before I turn it over to Mr. Bates and Sophia Hartney, but I, first of all, I want to thank Sophia Hartney for coming back. She was a senior with us last year at our high school and now is a freshman, has and remind us where you're going, Sophia.
I go to UVA.
At UVA, she's a, she's a who down at UVA. And last year, as part of her interest in the schools and part of working through a project, actually, it was last year and the year before. She, she decided that she wanted to take on the challenge of looking at some of our policies and started working with Tricia Minson to look at those policies. And one of the policies that she was looking at was our homework policy. And so she, along with Mr. Bates and Ms. Minson, got together and I won't steal their thunder, but they did some really great work. And poor Tricia, or poor Sophia, has been put off and put off and put off to the extent that she now needs to come back from UVA during the summer, midsummers, to come spend some time with us. But we do, Sophia, appreciate your hard work and your, the integrity for which you've carried yourself and the fact that you're coming back now as a, as a graduate of our school system to give back to our community. And so with that, I will turn it over to, to Mr. Bates and to Ms. Minson and Ms. Hartney.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Can everyone hear me okay? Just double checking. All right, so good evening, Chair Litten, Vice Chair Downs and members of the board. And Ms. Minson and I are very happy to introduce Sophia Hartney. Sophia, as Dr. Noonan mentioned, is a Meridian High School graduate and currently a sophomore at the University of Virginia. Just to give a little bit of context here, Sophia first met with Ms. Minson and I back on August of twenty-nineteen. And this is when she told us of her interest in school law, specifically policy. She also shared that she wanted to intern with Ms. Minson. So it's important for you all to know that whenever Ms. Minson heard this news, she hopped up from her desk and did two backflips and immediately said, yes, yes, we'll take you as our intern. And that's, at that point in time, I looked at Ms. Minson and I said, you know, Trish, one, Sophia hasn't told us exactly what she wants to do. And two, we don't even know if we can provide her with a meaningful internship. And that's when Ms. Minson rudely cut me off and said, you know, William, I am the only one, or at least I thought I was the only one, who gets excited about policy. And we have someone else who's excited about policy, so don't mess this up, William. So at that point in time, we said, absolutely, Sophia, we would love to work with you. And we've enjoyed every minute that we've had that opportunity to work with her. So just so, so you know, in working with Sophia, we narrowed down her interests to the areas of instructional policy specifically in the area of homework. And Sophia did a really great job of laying out the following research questions for us. One, does the current research about homework reflect the reality of what students do every day? Her second question in the study was, with the recent focus on stress, mental health and equity, how do we ensure that our policies and current practices reflect our goals? And then three, what information about the purpose of homework do we need in order to better understand the students and the teachers and the parents' views of homework? And then four, what is the research on the merits and demerits of homework? And how can we make make homework more effective and meaningful for our students? So it's been a pleasure, as I had mentioned, working with Sophia. And the work she has done around this study is really going to be helpful in giving us guidance as we move forward in our work around homework inconsistency. We'd also like to thank Ms. Sally Larish, our new curriculum and personnel specialist, who worked with Sophia this summer in helping her get prepared for this presentation. So our goal for this evening is just to provide you with some information on the, on the reality of homework in FCCPS pre, pre-COVID. Because that's when she did her, her surveys to the staff and the, in the community and the students. She's also going to share her results of the study and go deeper into her findings about the impact on students, including but not limited to the volume and the frequency of homework, as well as the meaningfulness and the similarities and differences between the educational levels, meaning our students at the lower and upper elementary levels, as well as the middle school and high school levels. And she's also going to finally share information that includes the responses from the parents and the teachers in regards to homework. So without further ado, we would like to invite Sophia to present. And Sophia, am I going to, you want me to click for you?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, let's see if we can.
I'm happy to help too, William.
Okay, are we, we all set? Sophia, can you see?
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Well, thank you so much for that introduction. And if you go to the next slide. So as mentioned, my name is Sophia Hartney. I'm a rising second year in college. But before that, I attended Meridian High School and graduated with the class of twenty-twenty. So I began this study basically in the summer of twenty-nineteen. And as mentioned, this was before the pandemic and distance learning. And so because of those challenges, homework and grading has changed a lot, as we know. But along with that, there has been a focus on making education more equitable. Next slide. So this is our current homework policy that we have in place, and I can read it out. It's homework can provide an essential communication link between the school and the home, and is an integral part of the instructional program. Homework will be assigned according to the academic program and the needs of the students in that given class. It should be an expansion and enrichment of the material taught in the classroom and should assist the student in developing deeper understanding, good work habits, and the wise use of time. So this policy is not very specific, but it does kind of give a general overview of what homework should be. And, but it doesn't, again, give guidelines that would be useful for students, teachers and parents to know exactly what their homework entail. Then the next slide, this is the model policy that is provided by the Virginia School Board Association. And it reads, homework provides an essential communication link between the school and the home. One measure of a program or course is the quality of the work done at home by the student. A strong homeschool partnership with many lasting benefits for the individual student and the student's family can be greatly enhanced by a sound program of homework. In addition, homework should be an important tool in developing independent thought, self-direction and self-discipline. It assists the student in developing good work habits and in the wise use of time. The full policy also contains several guidelines, for example, that homework should be assigned only after the thorough explanation of any skills that are necessary to complete the homework. It should relate to classroom activities, et cetera. And so we can see that this model policy gives more specific guidelines. And it really emphasizes a homeschool partnership. In the next slide. So overall, I want to do this project to gain a better understanding of the practices of homework and their implications in Falls Church City Public Schools. It's really important to evaluate where we are to remain effective. This also went along with a kind of a district-wide, it's also nationwide reevaluation of homework and students' mental health. And a lot of the research that was being done to support those. Next slide. So this shows some of the background research that I did initially to kind of see what the research on homework said, like how it could be most effectively employed. And there's a more complete research see in the notes of this presentation. So I found that homework is viewed as useful only when it's employed effectively. And that entails that students are given a reasonable amount for their age, that it's assigned purposely, connecting to the curriculum, and so students are able to see the value of the homework they're being given. Students receive prompt feedback from their teachers on their homework. And that the homework strikes a balance between being more challenging than busy work, while still not being discouraging to them. Next slide. After this, we kind of determined that surveys were needed to gain an accurate understanding of where we were. We weren't really sure of the actual practices in the schools. And so I started doing surveys and I made several drafts of those on my own, trying to frame all of those questions around the research that I had done. I then met with several people in the central office, principals of each school and teachers in order to refine those surveys. And I ended up having five surveys in total. One for lower elementary, then elementary, middle and high school, parents and teachers. Though again, it's important to note that this was before the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And it was difficult to track demographic information, such as if the responders were EL families, their socioeconomic information, et cetera. That's important to determine, to have a more equitable focus. So these are the main conclusions that arose from my surveys. So firstly, homework was seen as positive in lower grades, but more negative in higher grades. There was inconsistencies on what meaningful feedback entailed, inconsistencies in grading among different teachers, a lack of teacher coordination for major assignments, differences in parent involvement, and a concern about the effects of homework on students' mental health. So the first conclusion was that it was seen, homework was seen as positive in lower grades. So this was in Mount Daniel and in Oak Street. Their homework primarily consisted of reading and word study, and students mainly associate with positive emotions, though there were still that had negative associations. Additionally, the self-reported time that students were spending on homework did not exceed the research-backed limits on how much they should be. However, it was seen as, homework was seen as more negative in higher grades. So that was in Mary Ellen Henderson and in Meridian High School. All responses by students had at least one negative word, such as stressed or bored, associated with their homework. And it's important to note that students in these higher grades often had more extracurriculars that they were working on, as referenced in student responses. Though seventy-five percent of all teachers would consider student extracurriculars and their home environment when assigning homework. Um, next, there was inconsistencies on kind of what students compared to teachers saw as meaningful feedback on their homework. So as mentioned, meaningful feedback is important for students to really gain the most benefit from their homework as possible. But when students were asked if they received meaningful feedback on their homework, eighty percent in the elementary schools said they did, but just fifty-seven percent in the middle and high schools say they do. On the other hand, teachers were asked if they give meaningful feedback, and eighty-five percent said they sometimes or always do. So this shows somewhat of a disconnect between what students compared to teachers saw as giving meaningful feedback. Oh, next slide, thanks. Feedback is important, as again, homework is most helpful when they're given prompt feedback, because it helps them really learn the material and see a purpose for the work that they're doing. And the next exclusion is that there were inconsistencies in how homework was graded among teachers. So we saw that teachers vary within schools, even within departments, over if and how much they grade students' homework. So homework would range from not counting at all towards a student's grade to making up more than ten percent of it. It was also inconsistent in how it was graded exactly, whether it was by just completion or if teachers would actually check students' homework and that would make up their grade. Overall, this can help lead to inconsistent expectations for students and what they expect their homework to be like. The next conclusion was that there was a lack of teacher coordination, mainly regarding if they looked at, if students had major assignments. And so in, the majority of teachers would say that they considered other major assignments students had. Only thirteen percent said that they strongly disagreed or disagreed, that they didn't look at major assignments, though all of those were in the middle school and high school. However, they're, they are lacking a system to know what those other major assignments were. And next slide. In lower grades, it's not as much of the issue, because the students will all mainly have the same teacher. And they will, so they'll all have like similar assignments. However, in higher grades, students have more freedom to take different classes. So students in the same class will have different major assignments going on at the same time. In a middle school, teachers mentioned having a team calendar or being able to look on a student's school log to see what else was going on for the students. But in the high school, no specific system was mentioned. The only one was really just asking the students. However, this can create some increased stress for students, putting more pressure on them to hope that their teacher is willing to kind of listen to their feedback and is able to switch when major assignments are. Another conclusion that we found was that there was vast differences in how involved parents were with their students' homework. Answers ranged from, I'm very involved with their homework, to I'm not at all involved. Additionally, some answered that they simply cannot help their children. And the most common reason which was mentioned in one hundred percent of the responses that said they can't help, was because they just didn't have enough time to help their kids. Overall, this can lead to inequalities on how students do and how they understand their homework. And this is especially important to note, because the connection to home is a major advantage of homework, as cited in our policies. The next, the, and final conclusion is a focus on students' mental health. And so this was a common concern that was cited. Ninety-three percent of middle and high schoolers said their homework made them feel stressed. And seventy-one percent said that made them feel overwhelmed or anxious. Parents also said, and these are quotes that, from parents. They said that it creates an atmosphere of tension, that it can cause stress and limit other activities, activities necessary to balance a student's life, and is detrimental and can produce loathing, procrastination and family conflict. And next slide. Some teachers also saw that it can create added pressure and strained relationships, again, quotes from teachers. However, it wasn't mentioned as much compared to the parent and student comments. However, it wasn't mentioned as much uh compared to the parent and student comments. So overall, there are some positive aspects to current homework practices in Falser City, especially in the lower grades. However, there are several inconsistencies among teachers and in practice which can lead to confusion. Um, some homework practices also do not line up with research-backed methods, and this is often to the detriment of students. But again, it's really important to note that um these surveys all provide a baseline of practices before distance learning. Uh, next slide. Thank you. Um, so overall, um, I don't plan to kind of continue this further, but if I did, I think there's several areas where deeper learning would be really helpful. So the first is um looking at student stress, anxiety, and feelings of pressure. Looking at the impact of inconsistent homework practices, for example, grading homework versus not grading homework. And um being given prompt feedback, late feedback, or um not being given feedback at all on their homework. Looking at the benefits of adopting a different homework policy. Focusing on demographic groups that perhaps weren't represented as much in initial surveys as we would like. And definitely looking at the impact of COVID on learning and homework in general. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Sophia. That was great and so great to have a past student here. Um. I want to, if it's okay with you, I'd love to let the board ask you some questions if they have, if they have any. Um, so members of the board, does anybody have any questions or thoughts for Sophia? Um, Vice Chair Downs, go ahead.
Thank you, Trillit, and thank you, Sophia. That was a really interesting presentation, and I was reading it this afternoon while. Uh, our boys were sort of peering over my shoulder and giving me their opinions on homework. Uh, but it was actually kind of interesting because we were just, um, we have four boys, two are at the high school, one's at MEH, one is at um. Oak Street, and we were just talking about this today because when our older two who are now at high school were in elementary, they used to do reading logs. And um, I don't know if we got away for that. It's hard to remember now with with COVID and all that, but with our younger two, I don't remember doing the reading logs and. It's I do think there, when you talk about homework, I think something like that. As much as we encourage, um, want to encourage our students to read, having a reading log where I can say your teacher needs you to write down how long you read, what what you read. It does give me as a parent a little bit more, um, I don't know, uh. Credibility or what have you to say you need to get this reading done. So I think there are some, you know, sometimes with. Especially with the younger ones, I feel like there are some great points of homework for homework. Um, a couple of other things, um, I um did have a question. Did you? When you were doing this, did you look at all about the difference between a traditional class versus a standards-based grading class?
Um, I wasn't really able to research that because yeah, when conducting it, I think standard-based screen was just being introduced, so it wasn't. Kind of as wide to, but that would definitely be another area for like further research.
Right, because I and the reason I ask is because I I sometimes. Sort of hear the talk among the older um boys and their friends about, oh, well, it's formative, it's not, doesn't count towards a grade, do we really need to do it? So that's why I was just curious, curious about that. Um, but that might be something for down the line that to look at. Um, and I think the only other thing I would add is, um, you know, I I do feel that homework. Uh, I I definitely am not a proponent of, you know, slamming kids with a lot of homework, but I do think. For my, for my own kids who are in higher level math, I do see a benefit from them taking, you know, doing some practice um. Problems at night to sort of reinforce what they've learned during the day, and I think they'll they would agree too that that is helpful. Um, particularly with those higher level math courses and um. I'm just right reading through my notes here, um, and you know, I I do, um, I never want to put a burden on the teachers, but I do think it is a nice check. For the teachers to see, you know, for for my um now rising sixth grader, he fifth, fifth grade, his math isn't his. His specialty, and so his teacher was able to sort of based on homework and things sort of figure out where he was. And then was able to give us some optional homework for him to really um hone in on some of these problem areas, and he really. Improved greatly because of that, that more, it was more of an optional homework, but it was really helpful to him. So. I think I think this was a great um presentation and and homework definitely has its place. And you know, we don't want it to be busy work, but I do think there are some definite definite pros to homework as well. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Vice Chair Downs. Um. Uh, Ariana, did you have a question? Or?
Oh, um, Dr. Dimmick can. I think she raised her hand before I did, so.
Okay, go ahead, Dr. Dimmick.
Thank you so much for your presentation. It was really interesting. Um, so thinking about the research you did on best practices in homework. And um, since you're a recent graduate of the high school and now you're. Moved on to college, um, and thinking about your findings from. High school and your own experience in call in high school now reflecting back, if you could, you know. Wave your magic wand, what changes would you make to homework at the high school?
I guess I think the main thing was um what I mentioned about like making sure that major assignments were being taken into account. Because I know a lot of um other students in my grade would talk about this. Um, it was, it would be stressful when you had like several major assignments in like in a day or in a week. And so maybe having a more flexibility or a system for that, I think, is probably the main thing that I would have liked in high school.
Great. Uh, Mr. Bates, did you have a question?
Yeah, and I was just gonna um, in addition to what Sophia was saying, um, respond, offer a response to Dr. Demo. In that, um, you know, what Sophia has really done for us um through this this study is. Provide us a better understanding into um some of the things that we may need to take a deeper look at, and so. The coordination between, you know, from one teacher to the next teacher, especially when we start getting into the upper grades. If we don't currently have a structure. Where if I'm a student and I'm involved in extracurriculars and. Just by the nature of the calendar or the practice of the teacher, I have a major pro- a research project due on a Friday, and then in addition to that. I have, um, you know, a ten-page essay due on on a Friday, and then I have a major um mathematics examination. And on top of that, I've had practice three, you know, three of the last four days. Along with the game on the fourth day where I may have a job and. Those teachers haven't um, one, either spoken to the student or two, spoken to each other. To get an understanding of what is the impact of the amount of homework I'm given each night versus. The demands of when things are due each day um that I'm that I'm having them do. Um, it it can really have have a um adverse of impact on students, and so some of the smaller things that I think we. May have neglected in the past is just, do we need to put in a structure where teachers are having um. Cross-curricular coordination or conversation so they they understand that, yeah, if. A student in one class is having a a major assignment or on average they're. Uh, having uh readings that are, you know, taking them two hours to get through each night, then I might need to find a balance. Um, so part of it is just, you know, the coordination and um then with the, also with the grading, we know that. Um, what was revealed in the study is that um there are some inconsistencies with grading. And so, um, one, do we need to do a better job of defining what is homework versus. Um, what is an extension of the lesson that has to be done outside of the class? Which may include research or which may include more like project-based learning versus. The practice um to um further support the um. Some of the foundational understanding of a of of a particular concept and what's being graded and what's not, and if. You know. You're giving me ten points for an assignment, um, and someone, you know, my next teacher is. Um, is not giving any points for the assignment or giving a zero if I don't turn an assignment in, and that assignment may be formative. Then those are things that we have to have to take a a deeper look at.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Ariana?
Yeah, um, thank you for your presentation. It's very informative and. Obviously, as someone who is currently attending, well, you know, will be attending Meridian High School, homework is a very important part of my life. Um, and so I would just uh first like to go off something that Mr. Bates said about consistency um between the departments and. Something that I think you mentioned, Sophia, with like that cross um, cross-system calendar and as well as what you said, Mr. Bates, about a kind of. Structural and, you know. Model for grading homework and our attitudes towards homework, especially in. Uh, the secondary level because that's something that I found was. I have found in years in middle school and high school to be. Difficult because pretty much every teacher has a different attitude towards homework. And um, I think that has, at least anecdotally for me and some of my peers, contributes to that stress and anxiety. Um. As well as just managing course loads, as you said, Mr. Bates, with other assignments and extracurricular activities. Um, so trying to remember and figure out what the homework policy is for seven different classes. Can be a major stressor, and especially during the pandemic. Some student or some teachers were extremely flexible and some teachers were not. And so that kind of created a lot of tension and confusion as well, so. Um, I love the idea of have in looking into some sort of consistent policy among departments or among. Um, entire the secondary campus or just the high school. Um. For grading homework and late policies towards homework. But other than that, my own personal experience with homework, I have some questions about. Um. If you investigated the difference between students that are taking IB classes or at least in the high school specifically. And students that weren't, if their attitudes towards homework were consistent across the board.
Yeah, I mean, that was something that was kind of difficult to measure just um because how many like different courses people take, but. Um, that was something we did talk about a lot, how if you're in like a full IB schedule, you know, you're um. Kind of the amount of homework you'll have and like the different projects like Mr. Bates mentioned that you'll have. Will be different than um someone with a different schedule, so I really think that's something to um that has to be kept in mind through all of this is, especially because we do have like. You know, we have the regular and then the AP and IB and honors, like that's something to juggle as well.
Mm-hmm, and also I had a second question. Did you find in your research that was there an incentive um for students like when homework was graded versus when it was? You know, not graded or formative as in the SPG classes? I know that was kind of before. Uh, your research was before SPG was um implemented, but was that something that contributed to like the meaningfulness of homework?
That's something that um I don't think we really asked out, but I think that'd be a really interesting one. Yeah, I actually haven't really thought about that. Um, but yeah, looking at that and because I imagine like also with the stress, you know, if it's graded, that might contribute like a bit more to that aspect as well. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Great, thanks, Ariana. Any other questions? Sophia, I just have one, one question for you, and it's kind of a big picture. But as somebody who's now done one year of college, you've completed that, and you look back on your time in high school. Um, do you feel like you were well-prepared for your first year of college? And do you think having had a pretty significant burden of homework helped prepare you, or you could have been just as well-prepared? If not having done as much homework?
Yeah, I mean, I think for me, um, my school has definitely prepared me for college. I think the biggest um. Kind of things that have helped to have been like projects and essays, those are definitely kind of consistent. Um, I guess there's some aspects of homework that weren't necessarily as helpful, kind of along the more like. I guess what you would consider busy work sometimes. Um, but I think definitely like the research that I did, uh, writing essays, drafting, all of that. Has been like incredibly helpful as I've gone into college.
Great, thank you. All right, does anyone else have any questions for Sophia? All right, well, not seen any. We just want to say thank you so much, Sophia, for being here. It's wonderful to see a grad who's. Gone off and done a year of college, come back and be able to present for us, and this is really interesting. I think it's. It's very relevant to to what we need to be looking at and thinking about. As far as our students and the burden on them and how to make it work better and thinking about their mental health, all of those things. So thank you so much for all your work on this. And for being here tonight.
Yeah, of course, thank you much.
Great. All right, yay. All right, with that, we will let you go ahead and uh sign off. I'm sure you're ready to go to bed. All right, Dr. Noonan, um. Next, we have for our final item, three point oh two two school calendar, school board feedback. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, uh, appreciate that, and uh very quickly, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Michael and Mr. Bates because they have. Been integral in uh working with the staff and committees on the calendar, but. Before they do, um, the reason that we put this on tonight is to be responsive to uh the requests from the school board to come back and see if we could get some input. Sooner rather than later around um ideas with respect to the school calendar for twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, go and going forward. So tonight, um, our hope is that we can um gather from you some information to help guide us moving forward. Um, with respect to the development of the school calendar around some very specific items. Um, I I think that the process by which we've used has been for the most part um successful. I think there are some big top-line. Uh, issues that we are hoping that you can help us um sort of navigate, and with that, I'll turn it over to uh to Ms. Michael and Mr. Bates.
All right, and I think I'm going to go ahead and and take this one, and Ms. Michael, if you're um. Willing to click, that would be great, and then please just jump in as um you see necessary. So we'll go ahead and start with this division goal, division goal slide. Um, and we recognize that there were some members that did not engage in this um process last year. So our first goal is going to be, as Dr. Noonan shared, um, to just look at some of the previous considerations. Um, we then want to receive input from the board on key items prior to initiating the process of developing the school calendar. Um, the items are going to include considering a s- a single-year calendar versus multiple years. Also, we want to look at preferences for starting and ending dates, and then scheduling holidays and breaks. And then the timeframe for the calendar adoption. So our calendar basics, um, during the last uh two adoption years, we discussed uh what would go into the calendar. And what values the calendar should reflect. We looked at contract lengths for teachers, admins, and support staff. And how the calendar had traditionally um been made. We also explained, if you remember, that back in twenty nineteen, the Virginia legislation. Which included a four-day, um, a four-day weekend for Labor Day with the preceding Friday and that Labor Day Monday being off. And then we also, over the last couple of years, looked at two pre-Labor Day options and a post um Labor Day option, including additional holidays. Um, we also looked at the current um state of the neighboring districts. Um, FCPS and ACPS, uh, more specifically, and and our engagement plan. So uh just a quick note. That the pre-Labor Day calendars would inquire, uh, would require a five-day weekend if we continue um to offer the the Jewish holidays. Feedback um that the planning committee received during the adoption processes includes. Feedback, um, that the planning committee received during the adoption processes includes the three day, um, three days off during Thanksgiving, a two day, uh, or two week winter break at the winter holidays, a spring break that is one week long, but also tied to the Easter, um, holiday, um, to maintain a similar schedule that the surrounding school systems also have. The teacher workdays were placed at the end of the quarter and that's feedback that, um, we've received, um, pretty strong feedback over the last couple of years from our staff. Uh, one note that we do want to put out, um, or share is that Fairfax County Public Schools did decouple their spring break um, in Easter during this twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school calendar. So this slide here has the current, um, student holidays, um, and, and our calendars as they, as they currently stand. And so you can see that we're starting with, um, Labor Day, um, which is included in our calendar on nine twenty-six, twenty twenty-one and ending with Juneteenth on six twenty, twenty twenty-two, which were added to the calendar um, this year and all of the additional holidays that were included. And as, um, you all, uh, supported and, and, and decided last year, um, there are a number of additional holidays that were included that had not previously been included, including, um, the Wali. We offered, um, Veterans Day and Eid, El Fatar, and as I had mentioned, Juneteenth.
Can I, can I, um, just chime in to make sure that everybody understands why we're giving those days again? Um, they really, um, while they are associated with religious holidays, we also, uh, as you may recall, had to respond to the state requirement that said that we couldn't take them off for solely religious purposes. Um, and so we did go back and look at all of our, uh, attendance data on those days. And we did see significant attendance issues with students on those four additional holidays. So, um, I just want to make sure that everybody understands, not just the board, because I think you understand, but the community understands that the reason that those, an additional reason to why those days are taken off is for continuity of instruction, um, because there are a significant number of students that are absent on those days. Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Bates.
Oh, thank you for that. All right, so if we, uh, look at our considerations for calendar years, um, here are some of the possible years to be considered. So, um, first is a one-year adoption, which would be for school year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And then the second would be a two-year calendar adoption, which would be for school years twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. And then the third option would be a three-year, um, school calendar adoption, which would include the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, as well as the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five calendar years. All right, so our preferences for starting and ending dates. This slide right here includes our preferences, um, for those. And if we look at the two weeks prior to Labor Day, all right, that would be one, um, option, um, a one week prior to Labor Day, a midweek prior, um, to Labor Day, where we would start in the middle of the week and then a post-Labor Day start. Um, in the past, we've offered the two-week pre-Labor Day and a post-Labor Day, but we had received feedback, um, during the last adoption to, um, in the future, look at a potential midweek start um, for a pre-Labor Day start. Um, and as we think about the ending date, um, one of the things we would ask for you to think about or, or consider um, i- is using the IB ATL days during the school year, which is something that we, um, were able to get approval from the state superintendent this past year. Um, so that the last day, um, would not be at the, would not fall on the beginning of the week. So, um, we wouldn't have to have students go through or staff, um, staff go through the weekend and then have their end day be on a Monday for that last contracted day. So when looking at our student holidays and breaks, um, for student holidays, a, a question that we might think about is, do we want to continue with the current student holidays and reassess after this year? Um, or adjust the holidays for next year? Um, you know, one of the thoughts might be that, you know, at least, it, it isn't beneficial to go through a, a year or a two-year cycle where we, um, had an opportunity to kind of live through um, the changes that were made with the additional holidays for, um, this upcoming year. Um, for the breaks, do we want Thanksgiving to continue to be a three-day, um, break? Or might we reduce that? And should winter break, uh, be a two full week break? Um, or do we want to reduce, uh, the two weeks? Uh, the other consideration would be, uh, what we mentioned before, which was the spring break holiday. Do we want to continue to have that as a full week that's also attached to the Easter holiday? Or, um, change that and, and if changing that, what impact might that have, um, with our alignment with the surrounding jurisdictions? Thank you. So slide, um, this is slide nine, and we wanted to share some important school-related, um, windows. And so we were able to, um, gather this information. It's already, um, been published, which is, uh, very helpful, um, to us. But, uh, you can see that our IB testing window is, um, April, uh, twenty-ninth through May twentieth. Um, and this is twenty twenty-two. And then the AP testing window is May second to May twelfth. Um, our fall season begins on August or began on August, uh, second. And it will go through mid-November, but as we know with, um, the VHSL and sports, depending upon how deep, um, deeply you go into the playoffs, um, whether it's, it, it goes through the region and then on to the state, um, finals, um, football could go up through, um, mid-December. Um, our, our winter season begins on November eighth and lasts through early March. And again, depending upon, um, the postseason and we know that, um, our student athletes, unfortunate for us, we, uh, they fare very well and, and oftentimes they're in the state playoffs. And so, um, that's something that we might consider. And then our spring sports begins on February twenty-first and ends in, um, early June. Again, depending upon how, um, deep our teams, our teams might go into the postseason. And so this is, uh, really our final slide for you this evening, um, which is our timeframe for the calendar adoption. And so we want to look at that timeframe. And so for a one-year calendar adoption, um, would the, the adoption, uh, be completed in December? Um, if that's your preference, um, and that's what's been done in, in past years, as you're aware of? Or would you prefer another time, uh, for that? And then for multi-year calendars, would, again, would that adoption, would the preference be that that adoption occur in December? Um, as it's typically been done? Or would that be done at a later, um, timing in the year? And would, um, going through an adoption of multiple years, would that have any implications on making a de- uh, decision in the December-January timeframe versus, um, later in, in the winter? So those were just some things that we were, were thinking about as far as gaining some input from the school board this evening. And Kristen, did I miss anything you want to add?
No, I think my question would be, would it be helpful for the board to go back through those specific areas where we're looking for feedback and kind of go back over them one by one? Or would you prefer to give kind of general feedback now that, um, William has went through all of the slides?
I'd also like to, um, inject this, and that is that, um, I believe that our chair may, um, may be off uh, because of some technological issues, meaning that we're down to four board members. Um, and, and perhaps, um, a general discussion tonight, but maybe with some written feedback from the board uh, in the days to come might be another, another way to collect some information, just as a thought.
I, I'll jump in here. I, uh, uh, I think that sounds fine, um, Dr. Noonan, with, um, Chair Litten, uh, having lost power. And one thing I wanted to throw out there, um, is, you know, a lot of, uh, I think, to me, uh, this is something that I think we also need to hear some feedback from the community. Um, I know I, I personally, um, you know, some of the things I've heard is, um, people aren't wild about that two week before Labor Day start. Um, but starting after Labor Day, we go way too late into June. Um, and, you know, the, the decoupling, uh, that Fairfax, I didn't realize that, that they hit the coupled spring break. So I think there's a, a lot, a lot, a lot to go through here and without knowing, um, you know, we have a really different calendar this year. And so I, uh, am, even though I've always advocated for setting up a two-year calendar, I'm not sure, um, not knowing how that, this is just such a new calendar. I'm wondering if we go through this year and do a one-year calendar and, um, to give us a chance to, to really live this calendar. Um, but anyway, my point was going to be, Dr. Noonan, um, perhaps I, I really appreciate the job that, um, Mr. Brett has done and the communications department getting our links out to the school board meeting during the summer. And so I was thinking maybe what we could do, um, in the central office update is when there's link, just maybe somehow, uh, bring attention to this subject and encourage the community to watch this video and to email us with feedback. Um, because I think that is one of the things that I, I don't want to, I, I wouldn't want to say too much because I really don't know where the community stands on a lot of this. Um, and so maybe that is a good way to do it is just, just calling people's attention. Hey, we had a discussion about the calendar, watch it, email the school board if you have any thoughts. Um, and that might help us, you know, inform, give, give you all better feedback.
So I appreciate that. We certainly can add some language to it tomorrow. Um, I do, I do want to, um, just remind the board that, um, in the past, we have asked for community input uh, on our committees, uh, that develop the calendars. So there has been, for example, um, SAOs, so PTA presidents and the like are all part of the process, um, who are representing the parent community. So, um, I don't want people to, to walk away from the presentation thinking that we don't take into account parent, uh, input, because we certainly do, um, through a variety of different, different means. But I, but I also hear you and we can, we can certainly add that, uh, language tomorrow.
That's a great point, thanks for that reminder. Does anyone else have any thoughts? I can't see anyone. Uh, yes, Dr. Dimmick.
Thanks very much for that presentation. Like Vice Chair Downs, I have been one thinking, oh, we need to do a calendar for more than a year because it's a lot to go through. Um, but I guess I am really concerned about the additional holidays we've added this year. And I do think, um, that I want to hear from teachers and, and really hear something about sort of continuity of education, sort of in looking at the not counting Thanksgiving week. There are fifteen weeks in fall and only nine of those weeks are actually full weeks of school. So, um, I would like to sort of hear more about that. Um, I also am very open to the idea of decoupling, um, spring break from Easter, um, for, um, just because it moves around so much. I'm also concerned that if many of our teachers, uh, now live in a district with kids in a district and have a spring break in March and we have ours moving around, um, what that might mean for our school system. But I'd also like, I, I would also like more information on Fairfax's other changes because they went in a very direct, different direction from us on adding the religious holidays. So if we could be provided with more information on that, I think that would be really helpful. And as to when to do the calendar, I mean, I guess we've traditionally done it in December and I do think it's important to give the community sort of as much planning time as possible for their year ahead. Uh, but again, I would love to have sort of more feedback on this fall where the majority of the added holidays have, uh, landed. Thank you.
So if I'm, if I'm hearing sort of your feedback, um, one of the things that we're sort of potentially sort of stuck in this push-pull of either, um, waiting, um, to see how people are feeling about the continuity of instruction and maybe adopting a calendar later or adopting a calendar in December like we have, um, that maybe is a one-year calendar and then gathering input after that about this year. So I, I, I think we've got a sort of, the, the challenge of the timing there is going to be, uh, important. So we may be able to, um, collect some information from folks, um, more rapidly, um, than, than that. But, but I'm not sure we'll be able to, not sure the timing of it's going to work out. So if we wanted to push it to January, we might actually be able to get some information from our staff and from our community about how those days were impacted in this, in the fall. And then potentially even do a two-year calendar, but maybe pushing it later into January for a two-year calendar. That's a possibility too.
Any other thoughts from any members? Yes, Dr. Anderson.
Thanks. Um, so we did have one, um, contact also from a community member already who is expressing some concerns with the, uh, continuity of instruction triggered by the fact that we have to have the holiday at Labor Day uh, due to the way that the, the law is written. So this is sort of, we have had some contact from a community member concerned about some of the issues. I think that, um, Dr. Dimmick was touching on about the, what, what the holidays might do to the fall, but in this case it's specific to that. I think for me, I have nope, um, I haven't heard from anyone who, who has complained a lot about the idea of decoupling Easter from spring break. There is the concern about workforce that lives in a different district that does things differently. That's certainly valid, uh, concern to keep in mind. Um, you know, it's a balance between if you were to move a little later to the adoption process, but make the calendar a bit longer. And instead of adopting a one-year calendar in December, maybe adopting a two-year calendar in January, you would, you would give people more information, you know, more planning time for those later years, but a little bit less for this year. But then it might actually give that information that Dr. Dimmick was talking about, about what do these holidays do? And so in some sense, almost a compromised position to start, and that's all it is. And we obviously have to have a lot of discussion. This isn't, um, anywhere near a, a final thought. But, you know, one sort of compromise in there is the idea that one could envision a calendar where there isn't a whole lot of change next year, but perhaps there is the year after that and one is adopting a calendar for two years with, but later in January with the idea that you've gathered that information. I don't know, it isn't, it is, it, it is a bit of a, of a quandary to try to figure out how to make some good database decisions, given the timing of things. And then the other, um, the other thing I would agree with, um, Ms. Downs about that, we, we definitely want to make sure that we're hearing from folks, um, you know, and so, you know, broadcasting out to people to take a look at this video and take a look at the presentation and, and to reach out to the board with, uh, with comments and feedback, I think is actually a really good idea. So, um, yeah, so I think, um, the idea that we are having this preliminary discussion now and then follow with some more, um, some more thoughts later, I think is probably the best, best way to approach it, given the number of folks we have here. And I know there are some others on the board who, who definitely would like to chime in on this as well and have their, have their comments in, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. And I'll just add, um, that for those, uh, community members who are watching this portion of the video who didn't, um, tune into the committee and board reports, um, the Parks and Rec Department is, um, is, uh, basically for almost every teacher workday and every holiday this fall is offering a camp. And, uh, so again, they're just great partners and really helping our working parents. So if, if you missed that part of the, um, board meeting earlier this evening, um, take a look at the Parks and Rec's fall catalog. board meeting earlier this evening, um, take a look at the Parks and Rec's fall catalog. Um, they have a great camps for almost every holiday and teacher workday and also offering early release uh Wednesday uh childcare options. So again, thanks to Parks and Rec for that. But I think that's, you know, hearing from our parents, it it is, you know, the additional holidays are a burden, um, you know, for our families um with two working parents. So I'm working outside the home parents. So um that's something that we want to hear, we want to hear from parents as well. Thanks. Any other comments? Oh, Dr. Dimick.
I also just want to acknowledge that this calendar thing is so challenging. We, you know, we, it's hard to have it all, you know, we can't start after Labor Day and in, you know, mid-June and have two weeks for winter break. It's a real challenge. And and I don't think there's any way to make everyone happy with the calendar, and that is why it is especially challenging. Um, so just to, you know, put that out there.
I think I I agree with you, Dr. Dimick. Uh, yes, Dr. Anderson.
I I also agree with you, Dr. Dimick, in that it's one of those points in time when going back to what is, you know, what's going to have the best educational outcome for the students sort of helps kind of cut some of that. But there's so many different factors and helping to sort of balance that to try to get the best, the best outcome for the students. So even with that guiding principle in mind, it's not easy. And and I just, I want to back you up and say thank you um for the work that's already gone into this and the thinking that's already gone into this, so.
Yes, and and thank you to uh Dr. Noonan and uh Mr. Bates and Ms. Michael and everyone involved, because it's it's terrific that we're having this discussion so early. I think that will help alleviate some stress later down the road. So thank you very much for that.
Feedback.
Very much so.
Any other comments from the school board? Okay, and uh seeing as that is, I'm I'm new at this, so seeing as that's our last agenda item, I believe that we can adjourn. Is that right, Dr. Noonan?
That is correct, which is great because I'm at four percent on my battery.
And we don't need to do any kind of rule call or anything. We can just adjourn.
Not for the work session, you can just.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for your time and thank you for uh your dedication. And we're getting very excited for a couple of weeks from now. Thank you.